There we go. All right, welcome everybody to the City of Salina Study Session for Public Relations and Social Media. And it'll be presented by James Curtis.
I think Scott Gardner, Department Head, may have some introductory comments, but yep, James will be the main part of the show.
My mistake, sorry about that.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, I'm Scott Gardner, Director of CT, Media and CPI. Today, we're going to be giving you an update on our social media accounts. They're pretty much set into two separate areas. One is dealing with the audio video that we deal with here on a daily basis. And the other one is dealing with the social side. So we, when I say we, I'm talking about Deputy City Manager Jacob Woods and I had the pleasure of interviewing and getting the media department started internally. And so the first one that you're going to have is James is going to come forward and give you that. And then after that, I will come back and then we will bring David up to visit with you as well.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, my name is James Curtis. I am the Multimedia Coordinator for the City of Salina. I've been at this particular position since July of 2021, when, like Scott said, when him and Jacob came together to kind of put this multimedia department together. They tasked me with handling the social media side of public relations. It's a little bit different from the previous person who was holding a public relations position in the fact that I'm not necessarily, you know, in front of the public, but I am the liaison between the city and the public. And so what I'm going to show you guys is just a presentation of what I've been doing on my side of the multimedia department since I came here on July 2021. A few of the goals that I was tasked with, not just from Scott or from Jacob, but also our City Manager, was to establish a more active presence on social media. So to that end, we have accounts on Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, Twitter, AKA X. That was one objective. Another one was to update citizens on happenings and events in the city. So either that's through press releases from particular departments, sharing posts from different city and county related accounts, as well as photo and video recaps. Number three, share City Manager's vision for positive community engagement. One of the things coming on board was that, at the time, it felt like there was a little bit of a disconnect between the city and the public and just being able to bridge the gap a little bit between that, as well as put a spotlight on our city employees. And so we've been able to do that through milestone anniversary that you see. And we'll talk a little bit more about that here in a bit, as well as getting employees in action. So to that end, let me go to the next slide. I have been tasked with overseeing 15 Facebook pages from different departments, nine Instagram pages, seven Twitter pages for YouTube pages, so a total. I oversee 35 social media accounts on four different platforms. I'm personally involved with 12 of those, particularly Salina Parks and Rec. I see those and then, of course, the city accounts. The most active departments on socials who I normally correspond with, like I said before, Salina Parks and Rec. But in addition to that, Salina Police Department, who has their own person that handles their account, as well as Salina Fire. And so those are the most active social media pages that we do have within our company. So I'll give you guys a little bit of a breakdown in between each of the pages and what we do. As, I think it's pretty obvious that Facebook is our most active of the four accounts. And we have a little bit over 15 or 14,500 followers. Seventy-one percent of the followers that we have are women, with the highest demographic being those ages 35 to 44, and the second highest being 65 and up. We have 29% men, with the highest demographic in the men range being from 35 to 44, and the second highest ages 45 to 54. So between, in the year 2024, up until Thursday, we have 15,000 pieces of content that was posted on the page. So that's photos, that's links, that's videos, that's Facebook Lives with the meetings that we carry, thanks to David, as well as text. And like I said before, our top posts are the milestone anniversaries, and that is really just celebrating an employee of the city who has achieved a certain milestone with the city. And so as an example, we posted something up earlier today with the Salina Police Department. And I think that last count was well over 100 likes and 20 comments. So those have always been pretty good for us. The next social media account, keep it in sort of the meta umbrella, is Instagram. That is our second most used and engaged in count. We have a little bit over 1,300 followers. With each of the posts that we have, about 65% of the followers are reached, and we actually have 35% of people who don't follow our account are reached with that as well. A little bit over 200 pieces of content that are posted on the page. So again, that's photos, a thing they call reels, which are short videos, and things of that nature. Doesn't necessarily count the stories in regards to data or information for that. So we don't have that particular piece of data for you. But again, milestone anniversaries and then city proclamation posts, which we did have prior to earlier last year, those were the top most engaged parts. Moving right along, we do have YouTube, so this is more of our long form content. Most of the stuff that is posted on here are the things that David deals with, and he'll come up here to talk to you guys about that particular portion. We have a little bit over 900 subscribers to our YouTube account. We have 206 pieces of content that have been posted on this page from 2024 until now. So that's meetings, that's videos, that's programs, special events. And with the most viewed account, or the most viewed video that we had, is how to find your new water account number. So when we switched over to a different way of collecting payments and things of that nature for water customer accounting, that definitely, that definitely was viewed upon a lot, trying to get that taken care of. And so we get to our final piece of social media. It is Twitter, AKA X. Though it has 969 followers, it is our least engaged of the four. That could be attributed to, I think, quite a few things. I think the way the algorithms have sort of changed, once ownership changed with Twitter, have kind of slowed things up in terms of our engagement. We have a little bit over 100 posts to this account. So some of the same things that I would post on Facebook and Instagram, I do also try and post on Twitter if they're timely. If not, I kind of stay away from that. But the top three, YouTube, Facebook and Instagram are the ones that I handle quite a bit. Going into some of the highlights that we did over the past year, 2024, like I said, milestone anniversaries. Again, they shine a light on city employees that are achieving work anniversaries within the organization, so we've been able to do that. One of the highlights, I would say, is that there was a storm that happened on July 31st, and we were able to document the cleanup process about that. And in coordination with E3 Coordinator that we have, Brent Curtis, we were able to get out timely messages to the public and how cleanup efforts were going with that, and that was met with positive support from citizens. In addition, we have been doing stronger cross promotion efforts on social media with Celine County as well. So if you've seen posts that I've shared from Celine County, that's part of the effort. I've been, I've been joining up with Celine County's Social Media Manager, Melissa McCoy, and we've been able to get messages out together, things that we felt like the city needed to hear, in addition to the county. Few of the highlights for me personally, I went to a few conferences. I attended the Government Social Media Conference and the Kansas Association of Public Information Officers, which is KPO. I am, in addition to Multimedia Coordinator, I am the Public Information Officer. So I'm tasked with getting information out with the public in a timely manner. And so those conferences, I was able just to apply tactics and methods to develop a stronger social media presence. And so I feel like that I've been able to do those things rather well. There's always room for improvement, there's things to get better at, but that is what I've been able to do. So for the goals for this year, 2025 is to establish a presence for the city on TikTok and YouTube Shorts now. Regarding TikTok, not entirely sure what's about to happen with that. However, if things progress to an amicable solution, then I will be able to use that to engage the public. We do have an account on TikTok, but it's been parked until this mess gets sorted out. But there is YouTube Shorts. So YouTube Shorts is just a YouTube version of TikTok. It's a YouTube version of Instagram reels. They're all the competing companies are doing the exact same thing, and so that just gives us more opportunities to get the word out. And so primarily, those avenues that I want to explore on those ways is to really engage the youth, to engage younger adults. I think one of the things that we have a big issue with is just getting youth to come on the citizen boards and committees. But we're using sort of the older methods, the methods that they would say the old people are on, and they're not on it. So we're trying to connect that way. So with that, having YouTube and having TikTok is our way of getting that across. Another goal of mine is to utilize more drone footage, video footage and cutting edge content, in addition to regular camera work. We do have two drones in our disposal that we do use. If you've seen the website, the first thing was based off of that drone footage. And so I have drone footage for Salina Parks and Rec as well, that you'll be seeing sometime in the spring. But that's ultimate goal, is to start using that as well. The Salina Police Department has their own, and we've been able to kind of correspond on a few things, to kind of get together and do some stuff together in the future. And then the final thing is just to continue the City Manager's vision of positive community engagement, involving and highlighting city department and work, city employees, behind the scenes work, as well as being ADA compliant, being able to make sure that we're reaching everybody and that everybody's having access to all the information and that there's no hindrance to that. And so one of the things that I'm really just proud of is that we've, myself and David, David is the person that, and when you see him present, like he's the nuts and bolts guy, he's making sure that the car runs. My whole thing is just to make sure the car looks good, sexy, you know? Try to make something like local government tasking, I guess being tasked with trying to make it look good. And so I feel like we've been able to do a very, very good job over the past few years. And I know that you guys have taken notice. I know the Mayor Lincoln Winston made a comment at the strategic meeting last year, just saying that, you know, over the last two years, the social media presence has improved, not just from the city commissioners, but to the public, and that is appreciated, to which I took 1,000% credit for. And I am really appreciative of you guys noticing. Like I said, we've been tasked, I've been tasked with this job on the social media side from Scott and Jacob, as well as City Manager Mike. And yeah, it's just been a really, it's been a really good time. And like I said, there's always room for improvement, there's always things that I can do a little bit better. But I've enjoyed this so far and hope to make it even better for 2025. So with that being said, I will stand for questions.
Any questions?
I just have one. A few people have asked me where the city proclamations are. Are they only on Instagram or are they on Facebook? I'm not taking time to research it.
The city proclamations are on our YouTube page. And so when we get a proclamation, I make it a point to at least put a post on Facebook saying, hey, there's a proclamation, if you want to look at the proclamation, go to this link. And so that goes to our YouTube.
Thank you.
Is there a way to put those on Facebook?
Yeah.
Since that's our most followed page, I would think we would just, you know, set up putting a deal, because I don't, I mean, I don't do Instagram. So I think it'd be advantageous to go ahead and post those on Facebook.
But if I understood you, you post it on Facebook and the link's there to the video, person reading the proclamation?
Okay. And I don't know if there's a way, maybe in water bills or something, to educate the public a little more that we do have the Facebook page? Because I know during the snowstorm, somebody made a comment that they couldn't find anything on one of the, on the radio stations. And I think if people, you know, if we can post stuff on our Facebook page and more people, you know, then it just pops up. I think it'd be advantageous if we could somehow get, the more people we could get from the public onto our, to be friends with our Facebook page would be beneficial. So.
That did remind me, during the last snowstorm, someone asked me, well, where do I find out if such and such is closed? And I said, well, I usually turn to NBC, I don't know which, it was a channel three or four, whichever one it is, and just look at the bottom of the screen. Do cities ever use their municipal cloud to be the repository of churches and schools and places that are closed?
To my knowledge, and I can let City Manager speak as well, but for what I've done as far as closings, it's been city related things, or city or county related. So like Meals on Wheels is something that, you know, the City of Salina employs, well, not City of Salina, but Salina citizens use in addition to the county. So I make sure to tell them, hey, you know, there's Meals on Wheels that are heading out there. So anything that the city deals with, so that's OCCK, the City Go Bus Stops, you know, I make sure to get that information out. Of course, USD 305. But in regards to churches and things of that nature, we've not done that.
I have the same observations from me, just in terms of other communities, but I can't say that others haven't. My initial concern is managing that volume of information and getting it right. If there was some locate, and I don't even know the technology, and maybe describing things that aren't practical. But if there was some just location where people could self-post, that might be practical. But tasking us with keeping up with all the rest of that is a little problematic. And I actually was going to say, kind of between Cash and David's remarks, that a couple of takeaways for me is social media and the work they do is not eight to five, and it's not five days a week. And I appreciate their responsiveness to, as things come up. And then I think the thing that we could do better is seek their advice more. They're very helpful in the heart of an issue, but in the heart of an issue, sometimes you forget to engage them or seek them out in advance. And when we're in the middle of a tough issue, they are very responsive in terms of turning things around and working with whatever the department might be.
Back to the proclamation issue, the ones I've seen, you know, we went through lengthy process to get where we are today. I feel we could tone down the green disclaimer that runs across the screen. I think if we ran that once, that would be sufficient. I feel it's a little overbearing and distracting. Probably if we just flash that at the beginning, at the end, and the end would be sufficient. One thing you didn't cover here is the, I don't think you did, the city's website. I know you scroll down, there's a news section. So everything that goes on social goes on that news site as well. Because I know with Facebook or X, there's just too much information, like you talked about, the flow.
Yeah, so on the website, if you go on that first page and you look at the news, it's whatever comes on the Facebook feed, on the city's Facebook feed is what you would see on that website.
So my other question is, how do we reach people of my generation and above who aren't on any of these platforms?
I was going to ask, just out for fun, show a hand, who here has an Instagram account?
Yep. I guess I should reframe that. Commissioner Davis's generation.
And that's where probably there, I don't know if I can, if I can answer that, but it would be more so, you know, stuff like this. So being able to do the old word of mouth, you know, flyers, newsletters, things of that nature. But I know that that was a cost cutting thing in regards to getting the word out, and so using social media. But, you know, word of mouth still exists, and so we try to use as many channels as we can. So we try to use the more traditional media outlets as well as radio, but.
And the way we get our information has changed drastically in this last five to 10 years.
Yeah. And so the majority of citizens do consume their content from social media. So recognizing that, we try to reach as many citizens as we can in a timely manner with the information that we need to give them, so.
So Commissioner Longline, your comment about the amount of information caused me to think that, I think you're all aware that these are free speech forums as far as city social media platforms. And so with the snow event as an example, both city and county, as things change, dated information stayed out there and needed to stay out there because there's comments, there's ongoing conversation in a free speech forum. So savvy users look at that and say, oh, that post is 24 hours old or a day old. But it can contribute to some confusion sometimes when we have dated posts that are continuing to recycle. But that's just kind of the nature of a government entity maintaining these platforms.
So what you're saying is, once something is shared, you can't take it down?
Correct.
Yeah, according to, there's, there are laws as far as, you know, protecting the First Amendment rights that prohibit us from taking down certain things. So what I do in place of that is I can edit a certain post so that it says update, you know, and then give like sort of a timestamp, a new timestamp of the new information that has been given, so that it's not something of, you know, somebody happens to see something on the feed of something that took place eight days ago. Because that's, that happens. You'll see something eight days ago, but it's nowhere near current. So to avoid that, we try to update posts, you know, that deal with time specific stuff in that manner.
Just one question, just for strategic planning, you don't have to answer this right now, but curious about plans for our second cable access channel as far as.
Yeah, I personally, not the one to talk to about that, so.
At the next meeting that comes up.
On your informational videos, one of the ones I enjoyed the most was the water main break repair process. And I'm going to suggest the next big blizzard we have, we put a GoPro camera in the snowplows.
Yep, that's a good suggestion.
No, that's something that we've, that I've personally discussed as far as wanting to, just to be out there a little bit more. So when these storms are happening, or when just anything that is abnormal, just to show different parts of the department. So to show what public works are doing, what streets are doing, like in the instance of like a traffic light not working, like what's the process of that, how does that work? And so you and I are in the same way, like there.
Yeah, because I don't think people have any conception of what it's like to push that much snow at one time in that broad of an area, and I don't.
Yeah. And so, yeah, that's another reason why those things are, are part of the goal for this year. Like I said, to fall for that community engagement. And so part of that engagement is just education and just showing them, hey, a lot of people think they can do, you know, our jobs. And we're just going to show you, I said, okay, well, this is our job. And if you feel like you can do our job, city's hiring, so.
I'm curious, from a practical application standpoint, is there a platform that's more user friendly or can do? I'm curious, from a practical application standpoint, is there a platform that's more user-friendly or conducive to what we're doing? I mean, I understand that Facebook is where we're getting the most engagement, but if, perfect world, if, uh, if you were able to choose a platform to work on, what would it be?
It would be TikTok. TikTok has surpassed Google, I believe, as the number one search engine. So that is where the people are, that is where, uh, the kids are, it's where the, the, the young adults are. So that's where I would be, if I, if I could choose.
Okay, good to know.
Yeah.
Is there, I guess I don't, I didn't realize we had an X page. So is there a landing point that lists the connections to all the different platforms?
Um, so the way that that would normally be on that page, I mean, on the bio, it's, it goes to the website, and so if you go to the website, then on the website in the upper right-hand corner is all of our social media pages, so you see those little buttons there, so from there, that'll take you there.
Sounds like you may need a study session where you desensitize us from our fear from all these platforms and just show us how they, how they work and how to.
Might need a Facebook vote, video about how to Instagram.
They're all spying on you.
Right.
All right, I think we've got the second half of media relations for you as well.
So as a brief introduction, David's gonna come and he's gonna show you the actual Channel 20 stuff that goes on in here, uh, kind of a background, about three years ago, uh, we had some opportunities that were presented to us, and so, uh, we decided to go ahead and create the media department, um, and so we've been blessed because, uh, James and David, Quinn Tag Team, when David is gone, uh, James can fill in for him, so right now they're taking that opportunity to, to switch places, um, but we had some opportunities. We believe we got them all resolved, and so David is going to come and give you an update as to where we are and how things have been gone and what's gonna be coming up for the future.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, David Hawxworth, I'm the multimedia specialist. Uh, been here since July of 21, and I handle all the video stuff. So, um, as you can see on the screen, uh, I started in July of 21, and some things that we did, uh, right off the bat was to institute a new Channel 20 bulletin board format, uh, to make the graphics more attractive and easier to read, uh, and you can see an example of that up here. Uh, we improved the meeting graphics, uh, so they're easier to read and they're cleaner. Uh, we increased the number of boards we, we covered. We added, uh, coverage of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, the Law Enforcement Citizens and Review Board, and the Animal Control Advisory and Appeals Board. Uh, we also developed programming to highlight city programs and initiatives, and we'll talk about that in more detail in a little bit. Uh, and then we worked with our video server vendor to, uh, create platforms or, uh, applications uh, that are, uh, non-cable, uh, TV platforms, or they, they're called over-the-top platforms, or OTT platforms, like Roku, Apple TV, and Apple, or, uh, Amazon Fire TV, and you can see the number of downloads that we've had in the, in 2024. And we don't get information about what people are watching on those apps, we just get information about how many uh, downloads of that app, uh, have taken place, so, um, people are, uh, engaged on that as well. Uh, so in 2024, um, we covered 196 meetings, and that includes 11 city boards and commissions, uh, includes the county commission, the county planning and zoning meetings, um, and then, uh, we don't produce the coverage of the USD 305 Board of Education meetings, but the school staff shares that video with us, and then we will, uh, air that on Channel 20. In addition to the meetings, we cover, we produced 154 programs, uh, highlighting, uh, various city services and initiatives. So when I play a meeting back, I'll precede it by a 30-second PSA and then a channel ID. And so a 30-second PSA might be something like how to make a park shelter reservation, or here's the latest exhibit at the Smoky Hill Museum, um, so little tidbits of information like that. And then a channel ID is just a five-second scene of something around the city, so I produce those on a regular basis throughout the year. Um, I produce news and talk shows on various topics and, uh, get into the details here on the next slide, and then coverage of various special events that go on throughout the year. So, uh, in 2024, uh, we had a total of 350 programs air on Channel 20, uh, totaling 247 and three-quarters hours. That makes us one of the most active media operations in the state of Kansas. I've taken a look at YouTube channels of other cities around Kansas. In terms of number of programming hours, uh, Wichita and Lawrence have us beat, but we're right on par with Kansas City, Kansas, and then every other town that I looked had, had much less programming. The difference is that with us, we're doing, we're taking a deep dive into some of the city services, um, and initiatives, um, and really providing deeper information than, than other cities do on their, um, on their, uh, programs. So, uh, the shows that I do, uh, in addition to the meeting coverage, um, I do a show called City View, which is kind of the flagship, uh, program that I do, and that, uh, comes out the Friday before every commission meeting. Uh, it, uh, opens up with, uh, a rundown of what's on the agenda for the city commission meetings. And then after the meeting ends, uh, I'll change that segment over to a, a recap of the actions taken during the meeting. Uh, then I'll have some news briefs, uh, various topics, uh, I'll do a rundown of what other city boards and commissions have done in the, in the past couple of weeks, and then I do some sort of feature story, uh, that could be like, uh, new exhibit opening at the, at the museum, or, uh, the one that's on now is, uh, an interview with, uh, Jim Coatch uh, about the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan that's being formulated. I do a, a graphic program, just, uh, highlight employment openings, um, it's, uh, there's no talking, there's no, uh, people in it, it's just a graphic, uh, that, that, uh, shows all the, uh, all the job openings, they're up for about 30 seconds apiece, um, and then we update that weekly, uh, and then, uh, as you were talking earlier, we have the Community Proclamation Forum, uh, that's open to, uh, members of the public. So some of the department-specific programs I do, uh, we have them all branded, so we have a show called At Your Service, which includes topics from Public Works, Community and Development Services and Utilities. Uh, the Park Bench highlights topics, uh, from the Parks and Recreation Department. Salina First Response highlights the Police Department and Fire Department, uh, Salina A and E, um, and, uh, our topics having to do with Arts and Humanities and the museum, and then a show called City Manager, City Matters, which is, uh, just a catch-all for all the other departments. I usually try to do three to five shows of each of those, uh, brands, uh, a year, um, and they could be as short as five minutes just to promote playday in the park, for instance, at July 4th, or they could be, uh, more, um, uh, detailed conversation such as, uh, uh, I did a show with the city clerk to, um, uh, uh, highlight the, uh, board and commission vacancies from last July. Um, so we post those shows on YouTube in addition to showing them in Channel, on Channel 20. On Channel 20, I, I put them all together in a block of programming, so they just follow one right after the other. For special events and programs, uh, we, there's a number of them that go on throughout the year. There's a whole list here, I'm not gonna read the entire list to you, uh, except to maybe say a couple of things about a, a couple of the, uh, items here. The Poet Laureate Event, um, which was held last October, uh, we livestreamed that from the Stiefel Theater, and it was a real test for our live streaming capabilities, and so it, it went off without a hitch, and so I'm, I'm feeling much more confident that in the future we'll be able to go live from, uh, any location in the city. And then, uh, the Smoky Hill Museum had me produce a 30-second ad for their street fair, um, and they, uh, bought, uh, ad time on the Wichita TV stations, and so they ran that ad down there, so that got quite a bit of, uh, exposure throughout central Kansas. I've done, uh, a couple of videos that were not for public distribution. I did a series of training videos for the Human Relations Commission, um, worked with Michelle Martin on that, uh, to, um, give commissioners an overview of the, uh, of all the background and the, uh, their responsibilities and their policies and procedures having to do with, uh, when they hear a discrimination case. Uh, the Ace District Food Truck video is just part of the information that goes out to potential applicants when they inquire about how to get their food truck permitted, uh, for downtown. Um, and so that's just a nice two-minute overview of, of kind of the policies, procedures, and process of, of getting, uh, a permit for that. Um, our YouTube channel is, uh, our main outlet for video, uh, as, uh, Cash mentioned earlier, we have, uh, currently we have 919 subscribers. Uh, when we began, uh, in August of 2021, we had 442 subscribers, so we more than doubled the amount of subscribers we have for YouTube. And then, uh, just some notable numbers here, uh, Cash mentioned the how-to-find-your-water-account, uh, uh, video, that's by far and away the most, uh, views we've had for any video on YouTube at over 9,400 views. Uh, the city commission meetings are getting, uh, just under 400 views a meeting, and that's actually ticked up quite a bit the last, uh, three or four months. The homelessness forum and the water main break repair, um, even though those videos are six months to a year old, um, they're still getting views. Um, when I put this page together, um, a couple of weeks ago, I had to keep updating the numbers because they kept going up, so, uh, so people are going back into our, uh, YouTube page and, uh, and watching those videos that they find interesting. Uh, some of the non-video projects I'm working on include the website. I'm kind of like the, I don't know what you would call it, um, first line, uh, first-line guy or whatever. So I post, uh, all the news releases that go on the website. Um, if someone, uh, needs help, uh, in the backend, I'll provide that, so if they need to add a user or change permissions, uh, for a user, I'll, I'll do that. If there's, uh, an issue, if someone's having an issue, something's not working right, uh, I'll take a look at that, try to troubleshoot that, uh, if I can't fix it, then I'll just escalate it to, uh, our vendor, MCCI, uh, and they can take a look at it. And then, uh, special projects, uh, for the website include, uh, one that we're working on for the Parks and Recreation Department to, um, uh, create a page where it'll have a map with pins that will show you where all the parks are in town, uh, and then we'll have a listing of all the parks, and you'll be able to search it by, uh, facility category, by location, and by amenity. So you'll, uh, open up a dropdown menu, you'll click, uh, what you want to click, and hit enter, and, uh, it'll show you all the parks that have that particular amenity, for example. Uh, and then you can go into each, if you click on a park, it'll come up with a page, um, that'll show you basic information about the park and pictures of all the amenities. So we're just putting the finishing touches on that, it should be live by the end of the week, so that'll be, uh, a great addition. Uh, I've also been involved in building, uh, the Intranet for our city employees. It's gonna contain a lot of information, uh, from human resources and from computer technology, um, so I've been collaborating with those departments on, on that. We're still working on a couple of, uh, technical issues, uh, before we get it rolled out, um, for sign-on procedures and, and how to get a staff directory on there that will auto-update. Uh, so we're, we're working out the bugs on that, and hopefully, uh, we'll still be able to get that rolled out by the end of the quarter here. Uh, another thing that I'm working on is, uh, the digital accessibility, digital accessibility implementation project, and I'm gonna just give you a broad overview here because there's a lot of stuff to talk about concerning this. So the U.S. Department of Justice in April of last year issued a rule, uh, that set technical standards for state and, uh, local government websites or digital communications, actually, uh, to make those accessible to people with disabilities. Um, so constituencies or, or service areas, I mean, we have a population, the city has a population of, of less than 50,000, so we actually have until April of 2027 to become compliant, uh, with these, with these standards. Uh, since Celine County, uh, the entirety of the county has over 50,000 people, they actually have, uh, one year less to become compliant, so. This is gonna apply to, uh, all our digital communications, so our, the city website, uh, electronic documents, including board and commission packets, um, all our social media posts, all audio and video that we post, uh, is gonna have to be accessible to people with disabilities. The good news is that there's an exception in the rule, uh, we don't have to go back to previous posts and make them accessible. But as only the federal government can do, uh, there are exceptions to the exception. So, you know, if, uh, if someone requests a specific record in an accessible form, we'll have to provide that. Um, so some of the things that we'll have to pay attention to, uh, include what's called alt-text, which if you've been on a website and you've hovered over a picture, uh, there'll be a little snippet of text that comes up that describes what the picture is. Um, we'll have to do that with every, every photograph, every, uh, graphic that's gonna be on our website. Um, we also have to make sure that, like, the contrast between the text and the background is, is such that a screen reader can easily, um, pick out the text and be able to read that to people who, who don't have sight or good enough sight to read it. We need to make sure that our, uh, digital communications, uh, are able to be navigated using a keyboard only, so if someone doesn't have the physical ability to use a mouse, but can use a keyboard, uh, to navigate around, uh, we'll be, we'll have to, um, be compliant with that. Um, that's just three out of more than 50, what they call success criteria, to make sure that, uh, all the various, accommodations are met for that. Uh, so more in my area, the, uh, video will have to have captions, we already have captions on our video. We have an AI captioner in our video server, um, it's not quite as accurate as we'd like it to be at this point. Um, it, um, you know, it'll get tripped up by a, a unfamiliar name, or, um, you know, if someone doesn't enunciate clearly, it, it sometimes can't make out what, what you're saying. Um, so in order to, um, ensure that we have a, as accurate a captioning as possible, we'll probably have to go back and, and edit the captions, um, we'll also have to put in who's speaking, um, and right now our AI captioner doesn't have the ability to pick out who is, who's speaking, so we'll have to go back and manually put that in. We'll also have to create a secondary audio track on our video, uh, that will have a, a description of what's going on in the video, so, um, it'll be able to be turned on and off by the user. Uh, but if someone doesn't have, uh, good sight, um, they'll be able to turn this track on, and if the picture switches to a shot of the mayor, uh, there'll be a, something that, on that, uh, secondary audio track that'll say close-up of the mayor, or wide shot of the, of the dais, or, you know, whatever it happens to be. And so there's not really good software out there to be able to do that automatically at this point. There's really very little out there, uh, that'll, that would allow us to do that. So we probably will have to manually go and do that, uh, in order to comply with that part of the rule. So we're estimating that just those two things together is gonna take over 1,000 hours a year to do. Um, so, um, how that gets handled, uh, is, is gonna be part of what you're gonna have to consider, uh, for the 2026 budget. Um, you know, is there software we're gonna have to buy, uh, how do we meet that staffing demand, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so that's kind of like the 50,000-foot overview, there's a lot more detail, uh, involved in it, and, uh, I think Michelle Martin- There's a lot more detail involved in it, and I think Michelle Martin and I will be doing a more detailed presentation to you later this year. So our goals for, or my goals for 2025, obviously, we'll be working on that plan for digital accessibility. We'd like to determine if additional video programming is necessary and what resources would, would we need for production of that. So we've identified four city boards and commissions that have not had video coverage yet. That's Arts and Humanities Commission, Community Art and Design Committee, the Solid Waste Management Committee, and the Tree Advisory Board. So, you know, one thing we have to determine is, do we want to initiate video coverage of that? And if so, how do we do that? Most of those or all of those four boards meet, don't, do not meet in this room, and/or they meet at a time that conflicts with a meeting that's already taking place in this room. So, you know, do we do something like move meetings around? Do we get additional video equipment and, you know, go out to where they're meeting now and set that all up for, for each meeting? So we have to make some determinations in that, in that area. I want to make sure we complete the production of the city Intranet this year. We, I want to review equipment needs. We have a 10-year equipment replacement schedule in place now, but, you know, it never hurts to, to review that and to make sure that we're not missing out on any technology that we think will be beneficial for us. And then as far as professional development opportunities, there's a ton of them out there. There's organizations that have great conferences pertaining to government video and to Public Information Officer-type things. So that's what I have, so I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Have we, you had all this data on users on the various platforms. Do we track anything on the Channel 20?
Unfortunately, we do not. There's, our, our channel's much too small for a ratings service, so we just have no idea how many people are actually watching programming on the channel. It's just kind of the way it is.
Hell, I'm guessing that as these other platforms increase, that, that one's decreasing, and that's kind of the trend with media.
It very well, well, might be. You have not, certainly not as many people have cable as they did 20 years ago, for, for instance. So, you know, our, our base of people that will be able to access the programming through that, that medium is, is a lot less.
What's the feasibility of getting on, like, YouTube TV, not YouTube, but YouTube TV?
I would have to do some research on that. I really couldn't give you an answer right now. Be happy to, to research that and get back to you on that.
Rather than Channel 20, because that's limited to Cox, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
I know there's a lot of people switching over to that.
Yes, absolutely.
I would just say, looking back, decision to curate our media department was a, was a good one. We had a lot of discussion.
I'm a little biased, but I'll agree with you.
Yeah. Turned out well.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That it? Well, gentlemen, thank you for taking the time to present that, and we know work went into that, and we appreciate that as well. We'll recess until our meeting at 4:00.
Close.
Here we go.
Yeah.
Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the City of Salina Commission Meeting for January 27th, 2025. And request staff confirmation that Kansas Open Meeting Act notice has been properly provided?
Yes.
Roll call.
Mayor Lenkowitz.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Ivey.
Here.
Commissioner Longby.
Here.
Okay. All that can join us, please do the pledge of allegiance and moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Brings us to the consent agenda.
Item 4.1, consider approval of the minutes of the meeting of January 13th, 2025. Item 4.2, consider approval of the minutes of the special meeting of January 15th, 2025. Item 4.3, consider approval of Resolution Number 25-8275, appointing members to the Law Enforcement Citizen Review Board and Salina Community Economic Development Organization. Item 4.4, consider awarding Project Number 25002, 2025 crack ceiling to Circle C Construction of Goddard, Kansas, in an amount not to exceed $510,247.33. Item 4.5, consider approval of Resolution Number 25-8273, authorizing approval of the Kansas Department of Transportation Title VI Plan. Item 4.6, consider authorizing publication of a request for proposals for purchase of city-owned property formerly known as Glenifer Hill Park. And Item 4.7, consider approval of Resolution Number 25-8274, authorizing and providing for construction of certain improvements relating to the city's solid waste facility and authorizing the issuance of temporary notes and/or general obligation bonds of the city to pay the costs thereof.
Thank you. Any commissioner wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
4.6.
Noted. Removal of 4.6. Remaining of the consent agenda. Does any member of the public have a comment? Okay.
Mayor Lenkowitz, I move we approve consent agenda items 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, 4.4, 4.5, and 4.7.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Brings us to administration.
We need to go back to 4.6.
You're right. My mistake.
That's right.
4.6.
I told you, it takes a while to get your feet under your head, buddy.
Definitely feeling that.
And maybe more a simple question in the, do you need to, this clerk doesn't need to read any more about it, I can just ask the question. Sure. For the city to accept the bids, are they based on a combination of highest bid and intended use for the city's purposes? There is a cute term in here, "city's best interest," which I'm assuming it's not just the price, if the interest is listed as one of the criteria for judging. What are the relationship of those two?
Well, Commissioner Sean Hennessy, Assistant City Manager, there is no set criteria. In the end, what will happen is, is it will have to come to you for a decision. So the end, it is purely a city commission decision. However, it does require that they describe what the intended use of the property is going to be, and it explicitly says that it won't be solely based upon the price. So what was envisioned was, we would post the RFP, we would receive any proposals, we'd go through it on the city manager's office side, verify that they met all the requirements, and then those would be brought within 60 days to the city commission for a selection of the bid which you all would approve of.
Are we giving any hints as to which uses would rate higher than others?
We, we, we did not establish any requirements. We stated very specifically that they would be responsible for rezoning because it almost certainly will require rezoning for almost any use, which it is. But we did not issue any requirements in that as far as either zoning or uses or anything like that. We just required that they described what the intended use of the parcel was to be for in their proposal.
All right. So as we're seeing here now that we have no established preference, it's just basically open grab bag?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say there's a presumption based on zoning that it's going to be single-family or multifamily housing or something conducive with the, the surrounding zoning. But beyond that, we've not gotten into the level of detail that we did at, say, Southview where you were down to finish levels and square footages and things like that.
Okay. So I guess this is my first time of hearing of selling property. Is there a statute or reason we can't just have it appraised and put a "for sale" sign? We have to do an RFP?
Hell, I believe that, as far, I believe it does require approval of the city commission, and so the goal and intent of this RFP is to get all the information to you as the city commission. I know in other jurisdiction I've been in, and I, I believe it's the same here, but I'm not 100% certain, it, it absolutely requires the sign-off on the city commission. So if the city commission is the one who in the end has to make the final selection, the, the city manager can review the proposals, make sure that they meet the criteria, but solely the city commission could make the decision to dispense with city property.
And I would add, it's a little bit dated information now, but quite some time ago, we took up the question, I think we had some surplus property for maybe a sewer lift station or a planted lot for a sewer lift station, and the commission deliberated on whether at that time the governing body wanted to take more of a just list-it-with-a-realtor and, and see what you get approach, or whether you wanted to take a more formal RFP approach. The thinking at the time was, it gave you more discretion and a little bit more control to conduct a process like this than list it with a realtor and create an expectation that a single bidder has some right to purchase the property because we listed it for sale, possibly. Really just trying to keep your discretion preserved as much as possible.
Mayor, if I may, the thing that is possibly noteworthy, this was the property, as you might recall, where we went through the KSA 121301 process. That is the statutory process. Anytime you're dealing with property that has been acquired and used and used for park purposes. And that was subject to a 30-day public notice and potential protest petition scenario. That occurred, that process was completed, and in the published notice, it does include reference that the plan is to approach the sale with an RFP process. That wasn't statutorily mandated, but that is the basis upon which we completed that public notice process.
Thank you.
I do have a couple of questions. Under the bidding procedures under K and L, it says the city will evaluate closing contingencies, so on and so forth. And then under L, it says a termination will be made by the city as to which proposal, and then before to the city manager, to the city commission. Who's the city?
In that case, the intent was to make sure that all the bids submitted met the requirements as far as what is in the bid package. But then the final determination, as I said, would be made by the city commission.
So, will the city commission know or see all the proposals, whether there's two or six? We will see every proposal so we can weigh in based on sell price, based on...
My intent was even if a bid does not meet the requirements, I still would bring it before you. And much like we've talked about in other areas, bids that did not meet the requirements.
And this is probably getting ahead of myself, but so if we accept a proposal and someone says, "We're going to purchase it, this is our intent," can we put a right of first refusal on there if they do not follow through with their intent and want to sell it to someone else?
You, as the city commission, and I'll defer to the city attorney, but you, as the city commission, could put requirements for the purchase of the property. And there's a variety of different tools that you could direct the city attorney or the city staff to draft. Because I have seen in a number of other jurisdictions where the problem the city had ran into was the property would be sold and purchased, and then people would quote-unquote "sit" on it, thinking it was going to be more valuable, and it would steadily deteriorate. There's a variety of different means that that could be achieved. I did not get into that in the RFP process, other than to say that, because this is, again, remember, just the first stage to collect to see what the interest is.
And that's what I said. I think I'm getting ahead of myself, but we can look at time, time for execution of what they're planning on doing. We can look at the right of first refusal. Some of those can be all done through deed restrictions and so on and so forth, I anticipate.
Yes.
Okay. The discussion with the selection process is held in open session?
Go ahead, Greg. Yes. It was certainly... There are, in some cases, I believe, where it is possible to go into executive session for negotiation of contracts and otherwise, but my belief was that this would be an examination, an open session of the proposals submitted, and then a determination by the city commission. You do, I believe, have the right, in some limited cases, to go into executive session, but the presumption was it would be an open session.
So, what's the next step if we have no interest in the property?
If we have no interest in the property, then it will continue to be maintained by the city and will be another parcel that the city owns. This is... This parcel is actually a decently sized parcel and located in a fairly usable location. The city owns a lot of other parcels throughout the city, but they are really scattered parcels and very small and very difficult to utilize. So, this would be one of the most useful parcels that the city currently owns. And again, much like the city attorney just outlined, it took a number of steps to get to here because the original parcel, and it went through the process, and then it was utilized by the school for a while, and it was, you know, World War I, and then they had special legislative processes where they had adapted for that use of the parcel. We have gone through the statutorily required processes to divest of it as a park, which the statutes do require. There was no protest. So, currently, the parcel is owned in fee simple by the city and has the ability to divest of it if it so chooses. And again, that would be your decision.
So, you won't know until... I'm sorry. You won't know until the process runs its course, but what we've done so far has generated inquiries enough to lead us to believe there is interest.
And the proceeds will go toward new playground equipment across the road, correct?
Correct. As part of that resolution, we spelled out that intent.
Mayor, if I may quickly, there is precedent. This model is basically what was utilized when certain of the elementary schools were no longer used as a result of the consolidation of certain of the elementary schools. So, if you think of the elementary schools that were repurposed, this is much the process that USD 305 completed in order to look to what was in the public interest. And as long as, as I'm sure you will, keep in mind the public purpose doctrine, that is that you are enabled to make whatever determination you believe to be in the public interest as far as the sale, that's your prerogative.
And while not all of you may have been on the city commission at the time, this is also the process we utilized for a parcel off Euclid several years ago to notice it and to receive offers on the parcel. And then that was brought before the city commission and a selection was made through this same process.
Any more comments or questions? Is there a member of the public that wishes to comment on item 4.6? Hope for a motion.
Mayor Lenkowitz, I move we approve consent agenda item 4.6. Second?
Okay. We have a motion in a second. For authorization of publication of requests for proposals for purchase of city-owned property formerly known as Glenifer Hill Park, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those same sign. Okay. Onto administration. Before we get started, I had a couple commissioners' requests that we move item 5.3 to the end of the meeting after 6.3 in development businesses. Is that something we need to vote on, or is that just something we can...
I believe that's your prerogative as mayor in response to those requests.
Okay. I think we've had enough feedback back here at the dais, but let's just go ahead and do that. Onto 5.1.
Item 5.1, consider approval of resolution number 25-8276, expressing gratitude and appreciation to city manager Mike Scragg for his employment with the city from December 12, 2005 to February 7, 2025.
Thank you. So, I guess, not sure if there's really a formal way to do this, but I had a request from other commissioners to maybe make a comment. You want to do that before or after we read the resolution, or what would be the preference of the commission?
Go ahead, read the resolution, I think.
Okay. Let's get started here. This is resolution number 25-8276. Resolution expressing gratitude and appreciation to the city manager, Michael D. Scragg, for his employment with the city of Salina. Whereas during the period from December 12, 2005, to January 29, 2018, Michael D. Scragg served as deputy city manager. And whereas during the period of July 30, 2018, to July 6, 2019, Michael D. Scragg served as interim city manager for the city of Salina. And whereas during the period from January 7, 2019, to February 7, 2025, Michael D. Scragg served as city manager for the city of Salina. And whereas, Michael D. Scragg has demonstrated invaluable and dedicated service to the city of Salina, whereas such service and dedication to his job and interest to the city of Salina are worthy of public recognition. So, now therefore be it resolved by the governing body of the city of Salina, Kansas. Section 1, that an official expiration, excuse me, expression of gratitude and appreciation be extended to Michael D. Scragg for his vision, dedication, and faithful service for the city of Salina, Kansas. Section 2, that the city clerk is hereby directed to have this resolution delivered to Michael D. Scragg, adopted by the board of commissioners and signed by the mayor this 28th or 27th day of January 2025. And with that, I'll open it to comments to city commissioners.
Well, our senior commissioner, to start?
I will exercise the gray hair prerogative here. Thank you. Sometimes in life, you miss opportunities to say things, and you say, "Boy, I wish I'd said that." But I said, "This day was not going to go past." I was driving around town trying to take pictures of everything that you had a hand in. Took two days. You'll see the pictures later. But, you know, during your tenure, because you were as active as deputy city manager as you were as city manager, particularly with downtown. But if you look at the downtown, our new businesses, growing our old businesses, airport park expansion, airline service expansion, college/university expansion, cultural arts, housing, infrastructure, and planned budgeting, I would say the city is set up for the future for quite a week. Have to work hard to mess this up. You've set us up on the right course. Your Mount Rushmore of accomplishments, certainly the downtown redevelopment. I think you were given the keys to this, and you've just been driving that machine ever since. I would assume that you would be a highly sought-after consultant for downtown redevelopment all around the country. So, answer your phone calls, you know? Maybe some high-paying consultancy jobs coming. Downtown development sometimes went forward, sometimes went backwards, a lot of times went sideways. I think commissioners and citizens learned about programs with acronyms that we had never heard of before or could imagine. But you always would break it down for us, very simple, and explain it, and did with such confidence that we'd say, "Well, he sure looks like he knows what he's talking about. This must be the thing to do." Your first year, you had to deal with COVID, and you kept the city whole. I don't think we lost an employee for financial reasons. And I would say that was probably the greatest administrative maneuvering that I've ever seen in my life, just all the work that you and your staff did to keep the city running, and employees paid, and with limited ability to communicate. The county and the city are now friends, thanks to your direction and encouragement. Our EDO is up and running. For those of you who haven't done a lot of budgets, believe me, budgeting is going to be a whole lot easier with our planned repair, maintenance, and replacement of items due to the inventory and the program Mr. Scragg has set up. Our housing development is on pace. You have a way of framing issues, particularly when the five of us are saying different things. You can hear what the commonality is, frame it, allow us to discuss it further, and reach some type of consensus. All may not have known he was the, I believe, Iowa debate champion twice? Yes. And what really impressed me was that you have never claimed to know everything about everything, but when you don't know, you go out and you read. I've seen books that you've read on the Black Lives Matter movement, BSL issues, and any other contentious, polarizing issue. This guy's got books on his desk, reading, you know, both sides. I mean, he is aware of what he's talking about. But most impressive is how you have stood as the beacon of integrity and example of professional behavior, both at work and in the community. I'm proud of how you hold your family near and dear. You've gone out on some of those trips with your son, and despite what was going on here, I know we were encouraging you to go, but sometimes it takes a lot of guts to say, "Job, eh, this weekend, you got to be number two. I got something more important to do." So, you've been able to keep your priorities in perspective, and that serves as an example for all of your staff, you know? So, if it comes from the top, you know, we're in good shape for those under you because they've had a shining example to look up to. All I can do is wish you the best of luck in your personal and family future endeavors, and name a street after you, please come back. But thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you. I've been honored to serve.
Any other commissioner wished to...
I... When I first came on the commission, I was kind of floundering away, trying to find my direction, and through the whole process. And Mike was always open, always there to give me direction, and always available. Yeah. I guess that's the big thing that I didn't expect, that he was always available and did his best to keep me informed. And that first year on the commission, there's a lot to learn. And learning the procedures and the importance of projects and things we take on, it was a lot. And Mike guided me through that whole process. And he was always open to my ideas. And last Friday, as we were meeting, I said, "You know, we really think alike." Might be scary for some, but we were on the same page on a lot of things. And I guess what has impressed me and what I valued most is your dedication, your integrity, in always looking out to do what is best for the city of Salina. And for that, I thank you for your service.
Thank you. And I told legal counsel banks, and the right thing is usually pretty easy to identify. It's figuring out, mustering up the courage to do it. And this is, it can put you to the test. And I appreciate staff support, legal counsel support, your support. We've all collectively tried to figure out what the right thing is to do and then figure out how to do it.
Well, there's not much to say after Commissioner Davis got done, but I'll add a few things. So, I ditto to what Commissioner Davis said, but I'd like to just give a couple little anecdotes that'll tell you a little bit about what city manager Scragg thinks of the community. I remember 16 years ago, sitting in a room, and we were discussing a sculpture tour Salina coming to town. And at that point, there was a lot of friction between the public and the art community. And so, we felt like sculpture tour would be a way to kind of hopefully bring the public together. And I remember exactly where Mike was sitting, and Mike's comment was, "You know what I really like about this program is the public gets to vote on what stays in the community." And you find this hard to believe, but somebody from the art community said, "Oh, no, no, no. The public does not understand art." And I think Mike understood that the public needed to have a say in some of the things that happened. And so, that was my first indication about where Mike was and how he felt about the community, and I appreciated that. And I think because of that stance, and I'll give some credit, as much as I hate to, to Brad Anderson, I think that friction between the public and the art community has pretty much gone away, and I think we're headed in the right direction, although there's still some people think we shouldn't spend anything on art, but then again, that's just the way it's going to be. So, the other one is Commissioner Davis mentioned a little bit about our time during COVID, and I was mayor during COVID, and we didn't know what to expect. Mike and I spent a lot of time on the phone. Mike spent a lot of time in meetings with Natalie and Deb, discussing what we could do. We didn't know what was going to happen to sales tax. We had no idea. So, Mike and Natalie...
So Mike, and Natalie, and Deb all got together, and the federal government had an unemployment program where if you were furloughed or let go, you could still receive so much per week. Mike's number-one goal was to keep every employee whole. I remember that. And so we worked and worked on how we could do that, to keep every employee whole while maintaining, hopefully, what we considered a solid city budget. Because of the planning that we did is a lot of the reason we are where we are at today financially. And so, again, that wasn't just by accident. I don't think a lot of communities did what we did, and so for that, we're very thankful. Maybe you'll find this humorous, and maybe you won't, but I told Mike last week that, "Don't be shocked, Mike, but there's some people that are not real sad to see you leave." I said, "Don't feel bad. There's some of them want you to take me with you." So being a city manager is not easy. You're never going to make everybody happy. As I told him, as a city commissioner, we're not perfect. As a city manager, you're probably not perfect either. But I think we had a really good balance. I think we've had good commissions over the last few years, and as a community, we're really headed in the right direction, and I hope that you take that pride, and you take that with you, and we thank you for all you've done.
Certainly will. Thank you. That furlough approach, the thing that I take the greatest pride in, and Debbie and Natalie put in the heavy lifting, but that was a customized furlough schedule for every employee.
And my office is near here, and I know how many times I saw three vehicles here late at night or early in the morning, so it took extra time to do that. So, again.
Well, I'm the new guy here. I've only had the privilege of having worked with you for a year. You know, before I sat up here, I didn't have a big idea of exactly everything that the city manager entailed. Just thought, "Ah, he just runs the city." There are times where he told me, "You spend your weekends driving around town, doing tours of the parks, the whole city, making notes of what's wrong," and that impressed me probably the most. He put up with my questions and my not knowing a lot, and he did it very nicely, always available, whether, you know, I skip our meeting on Friday and send you a text on Saturday. I appreciate that, and I wish you good luck in Missouri, and at least you're staying around chief's country.
Exactly. Chief's country is worldwide, but yeah, staying close.
Well, I guess that leaves me. A lot of what I wanted to convey has already been said, so I'll keep it brief. Just kind of on a personal note, you know, I've had a little bit of dealings with you when I was on the planning commission, and you were always a friendly face, a voice of encouragement, and I appreciate that. And to be honest, it was probably a factor in me running for city commission. You know, just my three years here, watching just kind of the process and how you work, and how staff works, and just the methodology, just how methodical, strategic, very measured, and patient. I've watched everybody be in that process, and you in particular, and I think there's a lot of evenings, a lot of nights, that people just are unaware of how much time you do put in with this role. It's, you know, I think the perception is it's a nine-to-five job, and then you, you know, figuratively punch out and you're done. And what I remember are things like, in the middle of that federal housing incentive money, you, at the drop of a hat, you, one evening, I don't even remember what time it was, it was very late in the evening, you drove to Topeka to help make that happen, facilitate the process, and maybe twist a few arms. And it's just impressive how dedicated you are to the city. And again, I'm probably reiterating some of the things that have already been conveyed, but I wish you luck in all your future endeavors and goals, and thank you for the time that you've been here.
Thank you. It's a great community. I said early on, I could be happy finishing my career here. The one, and I'll keep it brief for everybody's benefit, but a couple of things, I think you, I appreciate the fact that I think you've identified my values and what's important to me, but I think you've given me too much credit. A lot of the things that you mentioned, the downtown project, the lobbying, the housing, I was involved with, but it was with the help of others, whether it was Salina 2020, whether it was Development Services, Finance Department, even the example of going to Topeka. That was the culmination of Tim Rogers, and Mitch Robinson, and Senator Clay's, and Lauren Driscoll's efforts, and I plugged in when I needed to. But you've got a great team. This community has a terrific reputation of being entrepreneurial, being collaborative. I think we have mended relationships. I think the momentum's going in a terrific direction, and I just felt blessed to be lucky enough to kind of ride on top of all that and reap the benefits of that success. And then ironically, my family's sick, so of all days, they're watching remotely rather than here today. But, you know, the way I'm able to put in the hours that I did and be as committed as I am is all that family support behind the scenes. So with that, thank you.
Thank you.
So I did joke, "I'm done, right? Now I get to go?"
I did have a thought the other day that I can see you at some point in life coming back here to retire, so.
It's all my family, my kids.
The door will still be open.
So, and I didn't, did I cut you off by there?
Nope.
Okay, good. So with that, let's get this resolution voted on, and I'll present the plaque.
Approval of Resolution Number 25-8276.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for Resolution Number 25-8276, expressing gratitude and appreciation to the city manager, Mike Scragg, for his employment with the city from December 12, 2005, to February 7, 2025. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And with that...
Do we have a city photographer in the room?
Where's Cash?
We've got an old guy up here going to try and use this button. Recognition of your service.
Maybe we should change Angela Callum.
Thank you. Thank you again, sir. Yep, go ahead.
Thank you.
Item 5.2, announce the mayor's appointment of city commissioners to various boards, commissions, and committees.
Any commissioners have any questions or comments about this?
Does this start tomorrow morning?
That's a fair question. I don't know how we've handled that in the past, but I...
I can't remember if I made arrangements for me. I'll make them before tomorrow morning. Okay.
Do we need public comment on this? All right, open for a motion.
I don't have this on. Mayor Linkwitz, I move we approve the appointment of city commissioners to various boards, commissions, committees, as set out by you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval of Resolution 17-7469, adopts the citizens' board and commission policy. Oh, my mistake. No, I got too far into the weeds there. Simply approval of the mayor's appointment of city commissioners to various boards and commissions and committees. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we're going to go over to 5.4.
Item 5.4, consider authorizing the purchase of vehicles and equipment from the 2025 SubCIP.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. Staff solicited bids for 28 vehicles and equipment that were approved on December 9 as part of the 2025 SubCIP. In the staff report, I provided you a table that showed the recommended bids, along with the budget amount and the recommended bidders. Of these, all of the bids, except for five, were going to low bids, and all but two of the bids came in under budget. Of the five bids that are being recommended to non-low-budget bidders, these are all for not meeting specifications that were outlined in the bid documents. Staff also sent out an amendment this morning after identifying that the low bidder on the Sand Pro bunk rake did not meet specifications, so you should have had at your dais the new bid sheet for that particular item. There's one bid that staff is recommending that we do not accept. This is for the stump grinder. We're recommending that because there was only one bid, and it was incomplete, so staff felt like we would be better off to go out for bid, to try to get more bids and get a complete bid on that particular item. It is anticipated that the funds that are affected with the action today will come in under budget if all items that still remain to be bid come in as expected. It was a pleasant surprise that these items came in under bid. The city commission has the options to authorize the city manager to execute agreements with recommended bidders. To do so with amendments, you could choose to postpone consideration of this action to a future date and time, and give staff direction on additional information you would like, or you could not authorize the city manager to execute these agreements and provide staff with direction resulting in rebidding, delay of delivery, or possible cost increases. I'd be open for questions on any of these items. I also have staff available that were part of the process that could answer any of the questions that you might have on either the process, the bid, the bids, or the particular reasons for selecting which bids that we are recommending.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Pack? Any member of the public wish to comment on item 5.4? Okay, open for a motion.
Mayor, I move we authorize the city manager to execute agreements with the recommended vendors.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Authorize execute agreements for the purchase of vehicles and equipment under the 2025 SubCIP. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? On to 5.5.
Item 5.5, resume discussion on the proposed improvements at Jerry Ivy Memorial Park and consider awarding the revised bid to Smokey Hill Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $1,581,762.
Good afternoon, Mayor Linkwitz and city commissioners. Jeff Hammond, Director of Parks and Recreation. Before you to resume the postponed topic of considering the bid award for Jerry Ivy Memorial Park Improvement Project. To recap, the December 23, 2024 staff report or meeting, for the benefit of everyone listening and those in attendance today, August of '24, city commission authorized the design and engineering agreement with the engineering design firm of George Butler Associates, or GBA. In September, staff provided the city commission with a study session for conceptual design of the proposed improvements at Jerry Ivy Memorial Park. Feedback at the time at the study session was provide further conceptual designs to show greater detail, to show further size and scope of the project, which includes that police officer memorial, the water wall, and the splash pad. In October, with updated concepts with more detail showing that size and scale for the scope of work, the city commission did authorize the solicitation of bids. November 20, that project was put out to bid for approximately just over three weeks. It was also on the city's website. The bids were opened on December 12 with a sole bidder, Smokey Hill Construction. As you may recall from that meeting, the bid was $1,822,075 for the base bid, as compared to the engineer's estimate of $1.1 million. Staff and GBA met with Smokey Hill Construction to discuss their bid before and after that December 23 meeting, showing a willingness on Smokey Hill's part to work with the city and GBA. Also, you may recall during the meeting of December 23, the decision was made by the governing body to postpone any action regarding awarding a bid to further examine the financial implications of the proposed improvements. And the reason was straightforward. The initial bid exceeded the project budget and the engineer's estimate by a substantial margin. And exploring alternatives to bring the project within our financial constraints and budget, GBA and Smokey Hill Construction collaborated to revise the project scope and to provide a revised bid. Today, we present to you the results of those efforts in the form of a revised bid figures, a scope reduction summary, and the renderings of the concepts that you've already seen to show some of those items that have been reduced. These documents are available in your packet. Major reductions have been identified across the three primary elements of the project. In the spray ground, we removed liquidated damages from the project, extended the construction period, and there was an electrical contractor deduct, reduction in concrete pavement areas, and elimination of limestone seats. Thickened concrete edge was removed, and granite-ready mix requirement was reduced. Also, we removed four, GBA removed four new water cannons as well from that design. In the fountain area for the water feature, a 12-foot reduction in the basin and slab components was reduced. And in the memorial, the elimination of the cheek walls or sidewalls, capstones, narrowing of the stairway, and removal of the base bid plants and edging. These modifications represent cost savings which reduced the original bid from $1,822,75 to $1.5 million, approximately, $1,506,440, which is a reduction of $315,635. With that proposed 5% contingency, that total adjusts to $1,581,762. Throughout this process, there was not an exploration of a phased implementation of the various components of the project. However, the GBA team and the city investigated similar spray ground projects to gauge cost variability of just spray ground projects. The findings highlighted a spectrum of investment. Recent projects in Lawrence, Kansas, and Bennett Springs, Missouri, cost around $800,000. I also reached out to the city of Wichita, which put in five splash pads over the past four years, and their projects were ranged between $900,000 and $2.1 million. And then, of course, depending on the number of fixtures, the square footage of the total splash pad, and what type of mechanical systems they have to install for that system. Some of the fiscal notes in your staff report, in the staff report, in the upcoming fiscal year of 2025, an additional $500,000 is allocated for this project. However, the revised scope of work and the revised project budget, which totals $1,581,762, still indicates a shortfall of $1,81,762. Some funding options for the city commission to consider, utilizing $1,881,000 from the Parks Maintenance Fund, using the remaining Parks Maintenance budget for 2025, which would result in postponing... which would result in postponing majority of the planned projects within the Parks Maintenance Fund. Some of those planned projects include the Sunset Park Waterfalls, Bill Burke Lights on Field Two, some concrete improvements that were actually a 2024 project or funded in 2024 that we are getting ready to move forward on. If this was the desired approach, I would report back to the governing body at a future date to update the approach to these projects and adjusted timelines for these different projects. Second funding option would be combine the current 500,000 dollars from the Parks Maintenance Fund with funding the remaining 1,81,000 dollars from the General Fund Reserve. This approach maintains capacity for Parks Maintenance Projects, rely on the General Fund solely or entirely, thereby preserving the Parks Maintenance Fund for identified projects, or the last option I have provided would be to debt finance this project. Options for you to consider on this topic today, approve a motion awarding the bid for the revised scope for Jerry Ivy Memorial Park and Project to Smokey Hill Construction LLC for 1.5 million, 1,506,440 dollars with the construction contingency, and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Smokey Hill Construction. Option two would be to reject the bid and instruct staff to revise the scope and redesign the project to meet the project budget. This would require rebidding of the project. Postpone consideration of the bid award and instruct staff to conduct further research, report back to a specified date and time, and provide staff direction regarding the additional information you wish to have. And four would just be to reject the bid outright. Myself, I'm available for any questions you might have. Also, representatives from GBA are here to also talk about this project with you if you so desire, and I'll stand for any questions you might have, or we will stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Any questions or discussion?
Just with the major reduction, do any of those hasten any future maintenance on the project? Or are we, construction, I don't know what granite ready?
It's my understanding that none of the, which Jim with GBA would probably better answer than I, but it's my understanding that none of the items that were proposed for reductions would impact future operations, or it would not impact our ability to, 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 you know, do additional work.
We maintain the integrity of the entire project and provided a high-quality look. We removed some of the aesthetics, such as seating and some additional square footage. By removing some of the requirements on the bid with the liquidated damages, the schedule, the requirements, electrical and stuff like that, we were able to get most of our costs by just aesthetic changes or whatever. So it really does maintain an exemplary, significant project for you in your region. Definitely the state of Kansas is something that's something to be quite proud of at a more practical cost.
Thank you. Could our parks and rec later put the edging, the plantings in? That's something that we could do internally?
Certainly, we certainly can do all, any and all landscaping with our landscaping crew for the most part. And there's also local contractors who can help with that as well.
Yep. But does include seating of all disturbed areas and returning it back to park quality environment?
I'm assuming when folks go to spray parks, they bring their own portable seating?
That's, I've seen that quite often in my time running aquatic centers. It's, they generally gravitate toward where shade is, and they bring their own chair, put it under that shade, a vantage point where they can see their children. And there's plenty of shade on the south end of that area that we propose.
Okay.
From the research that I have done, I think the reason we find our place here is due to the short timeline we put on this bid. And I would like to reject this bid and rebid the project, separate the projects to what we can afford right now. To separate the projects and bid them separately with an add alternate to tie in the water wall, to roughen the plumbing, whatever we need to do, and put this whole thing back out for bid. And I'm not in favor of cutting back and getting something we'll later regret. And in terms of the law enforcement memorial, I would like to see us expand what we already have in the plans. You know, possibly involve the sheriff's office and highway patrol. I think there's money available to contribute to that and make that world-class.
Hi, Commissioner Longbottom, you reminded me of one item I forgot to add was, I did reach out to Police Excellence Fund regarding this project, and if they were willing to participate, and they were not willing to participate, but that's just one ask, one item. Also reached out to a private donor who had expressed a desire to fund other projects more in natural park settings, and they also declined as well. So just wanted to add that.
Well, I think if the law enforcement memorial can raise money to do what they've done over at Sunset Park, there's opportunities for, did I say law enforcement, the War Memorial Committee?
What, when you said Sunset Park in New Richmond?
In Sunset Park.
And I don't want to speak for the Police Excellence Fund, and I haven't spoken to them, but they did just get done helping fund the Bearcat, so they may be catching their breath. I know they're generally supportive, they've got some other initiatives, so I think there probably is, well, you probably can speak for them.
I can speak for them because I am on that board, but their goal, or our goal on that board is to, you know, prevent having to have another memorial. So their funds are going to go more towards the protection and of that.
Understood.
So it was just sort of flat-out rejection, it was discussed quite a bit, so.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
And I did abstain from all that, I was just.
Well, originally, I voted against the larger plan to begin with, and then it came back to us and we thought we could do what this was supposed, you know, what was originally designed for around a million dollars. I said, you know, maybe I was wrong, you know, because it did look nice, but I'm kind of back to where I was several months ago, basically saying that I think we do need to break out the police memorial and the splash pad. Again, I'm disappointed that I don't think we're going to have a splash pad at Jerry Ivy Park yet this year for this summer, and that was my one thing that I was concerned about when we were doing the larger project, that this was going to happen, because the splash pad is something that the community uses, and anyone can use it, all income levels, everybody, it's a highly-used facility. I'm for rejecting this bid and going out and trying to find out, looking at, you know, Bennett Springs, Lawrence, whoever's done splash pads recently, find something that we can do, you know, even if it's, obviously prices have gone up, if it's in that 700, 800,000 range, at least it's a lot less than a million six. And again, as I said before, we talked about doing this water feature at Jerry Ivy, we're talking about doing a water feature, which is the river project, and we're going to be putting millions of dollars into that. I'm for going back to the drawing board and trying to get us a good splash pad that the youth of Salina can use and enjoy and move on.
If Mr. Wood would indulge me, there is a folder that he can pull up an image of Bennett Springs, Missouri, that I did mention in my staff report, if he's willing to do so, and then there's some cost estimates for that splash pad that he can put on the screen just to give you a little bit of perspective or a little bit of options.
Off the top of your head, do you recall the price, if we were doing just the splash pad of the original drawings that you brought at the last meeting?
Correct, that was 1.3 million. We were able to cut a couple hundred thousand out of that, 100,000 dollars out of the memorial to meet that. So again, we went from 1.3 to 1.1 for that. What Jacob's working to pull up is at 900?
32,000, 932.
Okay.
That's a bad.
Over 900, over 900,000 dollars, and it's a very simple concept. And so you are really getting a great value for 1.1 million. It doesn't meet your budget, I understand all the requirements, but I really do believe after we've done our research that you could have that thing there for 900,000 dollars, you could have yours for 1.1 on what you have now. We will work with you and Jeff and the city to meet your needs. If that means going out to rebid, there is a cost, there is a concern that costs will go up, we're going to substantially cut the plumbing and filter systems to meet your budget. So there's lots of things in play, we're going to work hand-in-hand with the city to make that out, but again, what we're showing you compared to this is light and night and day.
I'm not sure what I'm getting for 1.1 million, because every time we look at this, we're taking stuff back. I don't, you know, is all that seating that was there, has that been removed then?
There was the block, there was 30 blocks that were limestone-cut blocks that created the edge all the way around it, those were removed, that's correct. There still are four benches that were part of the process that were maintained on slabs.
And it was reducing some of the concrete work on the, so the area that flowed through there?
Right, sorry.
So that goes away?
We had oversized it, meaning your vision, hopefully, at 6,000 square feet area, your initial, your current one was only, was slightly over 2,000?
2,500.
2,500. We have reduced that by close to 1,500, so we're still at 4,500 square feet compared to your 25 and some of that, so there's still a large area that we're providing, what I tried to, exceptional place, and then when we compare it to what's being under construction right now in Bennett Springs, pretty impressed, but I understand where we're at.
If we rebid this, can we re-put out the original plan and then the scaled-back plan? And kind of see what we get, or would that complicate things?
I think that would be complicated. I mean.
I think you could treat the scaled-back elements as add alternates. I mean.
It's, you get better value by add, by adds and reductions, so we would start at this, and then we could add, add back, it's just a way to get better value because people, that's just the mentality. So we could go with the 1.1 base bid and then add the extra square footage and the seats as addition adds to it, to be able to show you what that would be. That's the, how it works better in the construction industry is an add alternate. We would do the memorial as a total add alternate as well, it'd be a package by itself as a clear add to it as well, same kind of process.
So in terms of having a spray ground up and running this summer, that's, we're probably at a point of no return on that now, aren't we?
If you accept this bid as is, it will, you'll have it running this summer, but I understand where you're at.
Yeah.
If we rebid it, that could take, it'll take us at least two months and a month for contracting, so you would lose this year. But again, meet all your other requirements.
So a million dollars for the splash pad is, for a good one, is the going price, it sounds like?
I was, I was with you, I was, I was, we made mistakes on our end, I'm owning that, we didn't understand what some of the requirements of the timeline, liquidated damages, some of the other things, we missed a few numbers, didn't have freight, which is a pretty big number in our number, stuff like that. After we've done our work for the last couple of months and tried to understand what the going rate is, you know, it's a good product for a good price, but it might not meet your needs, we understand that.
Now, might not meet our needs as far as things have been taken out, or?
Just meet your needs of your current budget, your current budget. It meets, you know, your wishes and visions that was expressed in this fall, but maybe 4,500 square feet is just not a good number, we need to go even smaller.
So our original expectations for what we were going to get for that money were delusional.
Well, just in terms of square footage, we were at 6,000 square feet, we cut down 45, but really, if we need to go smaller budget, we're getting, we're going to go smaller, we're going to change filter systems out to underground systems as opposed to above-ground systems, which add a little bit more back-breaking maintenance perhaps, but we would love the opportunity to design to meet your budget. We just, as designers present here today, we tried well, and Anthony next to me, what we.
So when we originally planned this, what was our budget for the?
Well, so there's a little bit of a progression here, the plan was water feature to replace the pond.
Right.
And then, as we started brainstorming, there was some, the possibility of the law enforcement memorial, then the spray ground broke down on us mid-season, and then that caused us to try to merge all this together, so, and the thinking was 750,000 dollar range is my recollection on the spray ground, and then trying to beef that up with the water wall and the memorial. Had we, we went into that pretty confident of the budget numbers that we could get the scope that we saw for a number that was a stretch number for us in terms of what we were willing to spend, had we not been that confident, I think we would have gone into this process with a lot more add alternates, a lot more alternatives fleshed out, and tried to feel the market out more by our design and bid process. Now we find ourselves on the backside of that with not a lot of flexibility unless you want to go back and redesign and rebid.
So I guess I'd ask fellow commissioners, if, if the water feature was the third-most necessary thing to do now, would you be willing to spend a little more than what we budgeted for a state-of-the-art splash pad? Because obviously, they cost more than what we thought they could.
Sorry to interrupt for a second, but I don't know that we, the way the bids are conducted, the way the bid that we've received, we have the luxury of mixing and matching, plugging, and playing. That's kind of my point earlier, that had we not been as confident about our ability to get the product for the price, we would have bid this differently to where we would have that flexibility right now.
The base bid was the memorial, water wall, and splash pad together. And then the alternates we did put in place were landscaping, lighting, some of those other components, like the gazebo.
Well, and the other way of looking at it, are we going to, in the end, spend more, break them out, I mean, over a two-year period than what we'd spend now and just get it over with?
Well, we might, but, you know, your other idea you had was debt financing it, and we would spend more doing that by.
Right, I was, you know, looking at these options, number two, just, option number two seemed the easiest, we already have 500,000 budgeted, and, you know, write a check for the million and be done with it. Or we get, I mean, it's time we debt finance, I don't know if, but the life expectancy of, with the debt going beyond the life expectancy of the splash pad?
We'd certainly be mindful to not do that, but I don't know what the debt payment turns out to be then.
I guess I see this as a 25- or 30-year investment that I'd like to see us do it right and get what we really want and need.
Yeah, because we keep, you know, last time came in too, and then we're removing lighting, we're removing the connectivity with other stuff, and now we're removing four water cannons and granite ready, the basin or the, what am I going to look at? The concrete seats, I don't even know what I have. I can't vote today because I don't even know what I have.
So was our first priority to get a high-quality splash pad?
That was mine five months ago. And then we added the water feature.
And it's obviously going to be more expensive than what we thought splash pads cost, but if our goal is to get a premier splash pad, I'd like to see that be our focus, and, I mean, they cost what they cost.
And I would really like to see. And I would really like to see more than one bid.
Yeah, because I'm guessing if you go out, depending on, again, there's, there's different types of splash pads. There's what they have, there's something more of the standard like we already have in the community. I think we need to, to look at those and see what we can get for our money. I'm just, I'm not comfortable with doing anything right now because I don't know what I have.
What was the square footage of our existing splash pad?
Two thousand five hundred square feet.
Okay.
And the, you know, centennial, just for perspective, centennials in Hawthorne is about twenty-two hundred.
And then the one you guys showed from Missouri, do you know what that one?
If that is up here, Bennett Springs or Bennett, Bennett Springs, Missouri?
No, it's not in there. I, I, I don't have.
It's rough.
We don't know.
Okay.
The, I mean, the, what, what do you think that, it appears to be closer to the twenty-five hundred, just from, so just simple circle.
If we were to even entertain that idea of one like that, I would kind of want it to go back where the old one was and then save that site for something a little more grand in, in the future maybe. I too am having trouble with the, the dollar amount. I think one million was kind of a, a stretch at the time. Seemed like we were getting a lot for that, but when you go to one point eight down to one point five, it's just, I hate, like Mr. Longby said, taking stuff out of it just to take it out and then, then what do you have? So I'm torn on this one, but I, I too have trouble with that, that dollar amount.
Be closer to our, you know, budget number.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I would, I would be, I know this comes up every time, but when it comes to the memorial, I would say that could be last.
I understand.
Because we definitely need that spray park for the kids.
So the general sense is that we want to break it down into different components and work separately to make sure we get what we want for the project in its entirety. I mean, is that, or am I getting the gist of that from everybody correctly or? And in order to do that, we've got to redo the, the process then.
Swear on me?
Okay.
Does that include reworking our original water park alone? From, let's just say we weren't going to do this particular water feature anytime soon.
Right now we have that original splash pad scheduled for demolition.
No, I mean, the original proposal we saw at the last meeting, the splash pad as it was, but without the water feature. Because, you know, we're actually looking at three projects for this price, not just one project.
I think it's a compromise is, is kind of the.
Yeah, I think what I heard, the consensus that seems to be forming is the spray ground is priority number one. And Commissioner Ivy's indicated the law enforcement memorial is last, which leaves the water feature in the middle. I think that is helpful conversation to, to nail down, not necessarily tonight, but nail down that. Get a sense of how mu, what's the going rate for a spray ground? What do you get for your money? Then you can have an opinion about, is that sufficient quality or do we want to pay, pay more for quality? And with spray grounds still being number one, then you start to say, are we truly just bidding the spray ground? Are we at least open to add alternates and we structured it in an add alternate type way? And then see if you can get more than one bidder responding. And then you, you come back together after you've opened those bids and say, we have a, you now, I think, have confidence this is the market price. Are we willing to pay the market price?
Truly could not have said it better, but I mean, that's, would be my sentiment.
And I think we need to accept the fact that we're not going to have a spray ground there this season.
And I, I do think you at least are able to redirect them to two other spray grounds in the community. But yeah, this, this one won't be up and running.
If there's no other comments, well, let's open it to the public.
Rosemary Mihl, Slinna, I agree with Mike, Commissioner Mike and Commissioner Longbine. I think it needs to be put off until, and bid on two separate projects because I use that spray park with my grandchildren. And there are a lot of kids that use that, that spray park. And I think to cut down on things and then let down the road, you'll regret what you didn't put in. So I agree with Commissioner Longbine and, and Hoppe that not do anything and bid it on two separate projects. Thank you.
Norman Mihl, Slinna, would this qualify under a grant? Because there's a woman out there that got four hundred and eighty million dollars in her divorce settlement. And there's another woman out there who even got more money than that. So go look at that. But she, she got four hundred and eighty, boy.
Thank you.
As a local person? Your wife might be.
Bolt McAl, Slinna, I agree. I think you need to table it. And I agree with, along with Bill, that you need at least two or three bids on this. The one bid is, and I don't know how a splash pad costs as much as it does. Are they going to use the, under the plumbing that's already there or is that the issue why we have to replace it? That wasn't. Do what?
The, the failure is the plumbing that's there.
The failure is the plumbing?
Yep.
And then when we do this, are we going to maintain it so it doesn't happen again? So we're not doing this in ten years, fifteen years?
Benwyn Holt, Slinna, here's a prime example of sticker shock for you all. You look at the area, the scope of this job, how much it entails. It's, it's only about one block total. And you don't have that much in it as far as features or anything else in this little area. So with that being said, and that being, coming in at one point five million, let's put that in perspective. I'm gonna, I'm gonna beat this horse again. I've been telling you guys for, for two years now, the river project. People don't know that right now the city of Sline is in five million dollars in debt to this project on what we have done so far. I don't know where the numbers are at anymore. They keep saying it's anywhere from twenty-seven to thirty-four million to, to actually get what we want with the, with the river renovation. You're looking at seven full miles of river, including sidewalks, lighting, Founder's Plaza, Fourth Street Plaza, multiple canoe lounges, garage for maintenance to have a boat. All of the other thing, the new gates, the, the sediment basin and everything. If you think you're going to do all of this for even the high end of thirty-four million, considering right now you're going to have to go one point five million for this, I, I, you guys are, you guys are going to be going through this the whole time the river project's going on. Because that twelve million dollars that you're going to get from the Corps of Engineers is going to go fast for the, for the dredging of the river. And I don't even think that's going to make it. The money that you got from KDOT for the bridges, I don't see where you can do seven bridges with that. You guys have got to figure out that the river project needs to be scaled down to just the basics, get it cleaned out. And otherwise you're going to be going through this, and I'm, I'm going to say it again. If you want everything in the river project you wanted, you're looking at over a hundred million dollars. Considering right today, it's one point five million for just this little project. So that would be only be times one hundred. Thank you.
Hi, this is Jane Anderson. I live at six three six East Iron Avenue. And I am, am not going to talk about the river, but some of that information was incorrect. But however, I do remember when you talked about the South Park, Jerry Ivy, that you did want the South Slinna to have something special for their end of town. And I would agree with that, that I think they deserve to have something special for their premier park. And it would be an investment to the future of recreation for that side of town that actually deserves it. And it's a beautiful park and I think it would not be a waste of money or time to invest in that beautiful park to give people so much free recreation. So I would vote that you try to find a way to at least do the spray park. And when you take things apart, usually that always means it's going to cost more because you start bidding out and you have time and things go up in price. So I know that's a lot of money, but I do think it would be a beautiful thing to do for South Slinna. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion or are we ready for a motion?
Mayor Lenkowitz, I would move that we reject this bid and rebid this project separately with add alternates for the spray, spray park and the water wall.
Second?
We have a motion in a second to reject this current bid. And reiterate that last part.
Reject the bid and bid the project separately with an add alternate for the water feature?
So bid the project separately and add.
You said in water feature the first time.
Yes, this spray park and the water feature as an add alternate.
And I thought you were doing them both with add alternates.
Now that would be separate. That would, well, I, I guess the separation would be the law enforcement memorial aspect.
You want me to include that as well?
Yeah.
So is that three separate bids or two?
Well, I, I think we can do the, the spray park as originally proposed with an add alternate for the water feature. I can bid it all together.
So if it's helpful at all, this is all going to come back to you before it goes out to bid. So you'll have an opportunity, you'll have another opportunity to provide that level of, of detail or feedback. So I think what I hear you saying is spray ground is a base bid, water feature, water wall's an add alternate, law enforcement memorial's an add alternate. Staff flesh that out for your further review and approval before putting it out to bid.
And that's why you're such a great city manager. We can summarize this stuff and.
I, I will second that.
Form that consensus.
Still think we're going to come in at that high, high number, but.
Well, I, I think when you, I think you're still going to end up looking at the scope of the spray ground before you put it out to bid. That, that'll be your base, but you're going to have to talk about the scope of that spray ground.
In a spray ground, because we're really not even talking about what we anticipate the spray ground looking like.
Right. And, and you're going to need guidance from our consultant and staff. What's the going rate for spray grounds? And then I mentioned it the last time you deliberated, it's a value proposition for you of, we can get this much for this amount of money. We, we think we can get this much for this amount of money. What's the value proposition?
And I think the important part is we're not going to rush and push it out the door like we did previously.
Okay, so a motion in a second. Reject the bid, put it out to rebid, spray park and the water feature are an add alternate. And we're going to leave out the memorial. I just want to make sure, is that articulated well enough or do we need to restructure that?
That's a fair question. I think the spray ground's base, water feature's add alternate. The question for you is, do you want to do the law enforcement memorial as an add alternate as well?
Doesn't hurt to include, I mean, if it's an add alternate, we just don't opt for it.
What if we did the law enforcement as a separate bid? Because the water feature and the spray ground requires some of the same components whereas the memorial does. Someone might come in and want to put in a bid for the memorial.
And not the other, I agree. I would just do the, the water, the splash pad and, or, and the water feature separately.
Sounds good.
And table the memorial, time being.
All right, so we all understood what we're voting on?
Yep.
All right, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? On to five point six.
Item five point six, consider approval of resolution number two five dash eight two seven eight, setting the previously to be determined fees for Bill Burke Park, Pestinger Family Stadium and Dean Evans Stadium.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I wish I could assure you this one's going to be easier than the last item, but I don't know that I can guarantee that. I will try to walk you through some history and then be, make myself available for questions as well as staff. As part of the staff report, I tried to excerpt for you noteworthy portions of the agreement that started out as the development agreement for the Dean Evans Stadium. And so things of note really kind of start on the bottom of page two. And what I wanted to call to your attention is there was conversation at the outset of that project. Understandably, there was concern on the part of the governing body about replacement costs, that, that initial investment as a public, private partnership, but then that ongoing replacement cost. And then as conversations evolved and we expanded from Dean Evans to Bill Burke to Pestinger Field, that, that conversation continued. There was early on conversation about fees and, and setting fees to account for operational costs. And, and I think there may have been some expectation that fees could help with replacement costs. The thing that I want to make sure you're aware of is from the outset, the, the provisions in the development agreement with the, with respect to fees said that they would fund future maintenance to the extent feasible, consistent with those charged by other communities and with comparable facilities. And so that was kind of a caveat that we want to set the fees, we want to apply that towards maintenance, but we, they need to be a practical number and they need to be comparable to other facilities. I would also acknowledge it's been hard for staff to find comparable facilities. I mean, we, we can find communities that have turf, we can find facilities, communities that have, make things available for rent. But are they as Class A as Dean Evans and Pestinger? Not necessarily. So then secondly, the, the development agreement had a committee approach to review and recommendation of, of a number of things, including fees. So in four point, five point two of the agreement, it addressed a seven-member operations, maintenance and advisory board. And I'll get to the membership of that board in a, in a minute. But then it also, on the front end, anticipated that fees should take into account, fees should be by the game for games, by the hour for practices, require additional fees for use of lights, not be subject to waiver, and that there would be a graduated fee schedule taking into account the respective contribution of this line of partners, I think is what, athletic partners is what they refer to. And then it also said that it will take into consideration relevant factors without limitation. So kind of a recognition that, and there may be other things that come to light, A through F. And I won't read you all of those, but of note there is gameplay compared with practices in letter D, age and size of participants in letter E, and number of innings per game in letter F. And so there was an intention to kind of customize fees in accordance with use and, and impacts on the facilities possibly. There's also discussion about a discount rate for contributors. It wasn't set as part of the development agreement and it was agreed to among the, that advisory committee. And so initially, Sline Baseball Enterprises had a discount rate, they USD three oh five in, in return for their contributions to Dean Evans and Pestinger. USD 305 in return for their contributions to Dean Evans and Pestinger had a 50% discount rate. And Kansas Wesleyan had a 25% discount rate for Dean Evans only. They financially contributed to Dean Evans. The reason I qualified Salina Baseball Enterprises is they came back to us with Pestinger being a second project and offered to do that as a second public-private venture and raise the funds for that. And so their request was that they and their organizations, American Legion Baseball essentially, not have to pay fees for 10 years. So they ended up with a full waiver of fees for 10 years in return for fundraising for Dean Evans and Pestinger Field. So I apologize. The membership of the advisory committee can be found on page one. And it's a representative of Baseball Enterprises, a representative of the school district, USD 305, a representative of Kansas Wesleyan University, the city manager, the city managers designate, a city parks and recreation department representative, department head will designate, a baseball-at-large representative, and a softball-at-large representative. And those last two, there's an appointment process for that. So that's your seven-member group that is tasked as the, what's now the Burfra Operations and Maintenance Advisory Board. And they conduct meetings and they are tasked with making fee recommendations. I haven't gone back and looked at the history of their fee recommendations, but this is kind of the culmination of asking them to deliberate and take this under advisement and come back with a recommendation. So as I assume you recall from the prior staff reports, that group prepared the recommendation of fees. They forwarded that recommendation to the park and rec advisory board. Park and Rec Advisory Board endorsed that fee recommendation. That came to you as the prior resolution. And you took that up and then identified fee categories that you wanted to further review and consider. And so that's what we're bringing back to you today. So the one other, I guess, thing to acknowledge is in that conversation, as those conversations took place, Kansas Wesleyan also was in conversation in wanting to collaborate. And they offered up some options for your consideration, which you were presented at your last meeting and you deliberated on. And my take of your response to that was a recognition that the fees that were left undetermined, while they predominantly apply to Kansas Wesleyan, they don't exclusively apply to Kansas Wesleyan. So there was a need to set fees. And then you would determine whether you wanted to take up other options, I guess, in conjunction with or after taking up the fees. And you had some questions about replacement schedules, those type of things. So today's focus is in response to your direction that we need to get the fees set going forward. So I tried to identify some decision points for you, and you'll find those on page five. So question number one, and well, maybe I should back up. So part of your conversation then focused on size of players, their impact on turf and whether different users impacted the turf differently from an age and size perspective as well as a size of team roster perspective. That seemed to be kind of the remaining focus. At the time, our terminology was focused at college. And you'll see I've suggested we apply that more to adults, and I can speak to that in a minute. So I think question number one for you that I would suggest is, is it your intent to establish fees to accomplish full cost recovery? I'm not saying that's a trick question, but we have not done the math to do that. And I am hesitant to see where that would take us. I just don't know that that's practical. We did have conversations with you about what is the replacement schedule? How are we going to position ourselves to be able to fund turf replacement when the time comes? Because we started into this with just Dean Evans and then Bill Burke and then Pestinger Field. And I haven't put the model in here, but we've had considerable conversation with you about the lifecycle of all those turfs, the replacement cost not being the full 100% of the initial cost because your base and your subgrade and your drainage, a lot of those improvements are in place. You just need to address the turf. So I do think we have prepared and presented to you a financial model and a debt service model that will perpetuate future replacement. It's dependent on essentially fees covering kind of ongoing maintenance on an annual basis and then transient guest tax revenue funding that turf, full turf replacement when the time comes. A subset of that is your fee setting constrained by feasibility and consistency with other communities. And I would suggest to you, whether it's that language or just the practicality of what that number would have to be to fully pay for replacement, that's probably not practical to pursue full cost recovery through fees. Second question that I framed for you is, does the governing body wish to establish a fee for teams older than high school players? And that's where I kind of pivoted to adults rather than college. We have had conversations in the past, and there are active conversations from minor league teams that might have an interest. And I don't know what adult leagues might look like and how likely it is they would want to use the facilities. But I guess the point is I don't know that it's exclusively college uses that would represent people older than high school age. And then thirdly, do you wish to establish a fee for oversized teams? And trying to kind of straighten out that or clarify that language, oversized may cause you to gravitate to the size of the player when what we're really intending there is an overly large roster, a team bigger than kind of maybe a typical team. So and what is that threshold? And staff can speak to the basis of our gravitating to 40 as that threshold. The fourth decision point was, does governing body wish to set adult team and I should say overly large roster fees as a dollar amount or as a percentage? And we've had a lot of conversation at the staff level with Kansas Wesleyan, with individual elected officials down the path of a dollar amount. And in all honesty, that got very difficult to do that math and keep it all straight. I kind of here at the 11th hour have said, maybe it's easier for you as a governing body to say, if this is the base rate that we're charging, we think it's plausible, reasonable. We were to express it as a percentage increase versus a dollar. And then maybe that percentage increase can continue to apply as rates get adjusted versus having to go back and talk about $84 versus $78 or whatever the case may be. So it could be on a dollar basis or it could be on a percentage basis. You'll see the draft that I've prepared for you is on a percentage basis. And then the last decision point is, do you wish to further consider Kansas Wesleyan's proposals regarding alternate options for Dean Evans? And I don't think that's an either-or proposition necessarily. You could make the decision on the fee structure tonight and then instruct us to continue conversations with regard to the options and give us more homework and some of the follow-up that you might want there. So I think that kind of takes me to the very last page, the resolution draft that's in your packet. And so what we've done is tried to create more of a table or a matrix. We created a 25% upcharge for adult teams, a 25% upcharge for overly large roster teams, and then tried to identify if, when one or both of those would apply. And I think the noteworthy thing there is in a game, regardless of the size of your roster, you're going to field nine players on the field. And so that large roster doesn't necessarily have an impact. So the approach that we took was that adult team upcharge applies, and then depending on the circumstances, the large roster fee might also apply. The other thing that I would tell you is the Bill Burke rates. The Bill Burke fields are comparable to South High fields in terms of their dimensions, use for softball, we use ours for little league, that type of thing. And so looked at their rates, they have a very, the school district has a very detailed rate structure for all of their facilities, and then they have some categories of users as well. So these numbers represent synchronizing our Bill Burke fees as it relates to adult teams to the school district's rates. And so instead, so they are category six and category seven. $40 an hour for practices and $125 for a game. And so because they already anticipate the adult aspect of the users, the adult upcharge is not applied. The large roster would be in a practice scenario. So I apologize if I'm starting to confuse you here, but this table then represents kind of all the base fees that you previously approved and then trying to take those college fees that were left to be determined and turn them into an adult team fee and a large roster team fee and then apply them in the scenarios that they would apply. And maybe I'll just stop there. It's certainly a basis of deliberation for you as the governing body. I think we've run the process as the development agreement applies, as the park and rec board advisory role applies. And it's squarely in your court at this point to deliberate and provide us direction. I would, staff has discussed in advance that we need to be light on our feet. If you have additional considerations, we'll make every effort to try to respond and edit on the fly to give you something that you can act on this evening if at all possible.
I'm just curious. We have all these different categories of players. Who was the prototype player that this field was designed for? Somebody 15 years old, 18, 21, 12? I mean, it's, and who's to say a college player doesn't weigh more than an adult player? I mean, they're athletes, chances are they do weigh more than an adult team coming in.
Yeah.
There's some very arbitrary divisions we're designing. I could see wear and tear on practice if you have 40 people out instead of 20. But like you said, during the game, they're not going to be more than nine people out there on the defensive team anyway. And fees aren't going to ever cover all this because probably 80% of the folks using the field are on some type of waiver. So 20% of the people make up all the money, which would be prohibitively high fees. I kind of think your approach to how you have it on the chart is getting there. I just don't know, I guess in my mind, I'm thinking a college student has less money than the adult team. I was going to charge them less, but if it's wear and tear, I mean, is it even worth it to distinguish between those two?
That's definitely belongs up with the dais with you, I think. I'll try to answer your question about who is it designed for. I do know there was a lot of conversation about the specs of the turf, but I don't recall it being age-oriented as much as just kind of quality, resiliency, length of the, I'm drawing a blank on the term, the nap maybe. Jeff or park staff may be able to speak to that more specifically than I can, but I don't ever recall it being age-oriented as much as quality, lifecycle.
I mean, is there something about the turf at Bill Burke that adults could not use it?
Could not do?
Could not use that turf because they're too big and too heavy?
No, we never really went into that with that understanding or expectation. It really kind of evolved out of your conversations about just possible differences in impact and trying to kind of protect the investment.
Yeah, I think, if you'll let me jump in here, Jacob Wood, deputy city manager. The design, we didn't really have any discussions about the type of player. It was really about the playability of the turf, so how the ball bounces on the turf and then the longevity of the turf. So I think what Mike said was right about the nap. There's different kinds of fibers and different way the fibers are integrated together and how that goes with the rubber fill, the type of infill, how much infill, and then how the ball would bounce on that type of turf. It was really how the design. There were no discussions about size or anything like that as part of the design work.
Would that make our concerns about the age and the weight of the players irrelevant other than maybe the number of players using the turf?
At that, I couldn't answer.
You may recall that your last deliberation, there was kind of an acknowledgement that it just felt to you like common sense that a larger player, more players, stronger players had more impact on it. It certainly does wear out in some amount of time. And I think I've, I know I've said to a number of you individually, and I think maybe I've said it to all of you. This is just me personally talking. I don't know that I can argue that there isn't a different impact. What I don't know is whether it takes the 12-year estimated life to 11 years and nine months or nine years. What alternate fee, staff did try to research that a little bit and didn't report back to me. They found anything conclusive. The UV was as much of a factor as anything. But I would acknowledge the obvious retort to that is that an indoor stadium should never wear out. And obviously, they do. So we have not been successful in quantifying the answer to that question very well.
Well, I think with our previous discussions on this analogy I made, there's a lot of difference in a 10-year-old girl out there playing softball and a 20-year-old woman who's in college strength training. When they dig in, when they slide, when they take a stance, it's...
Right, and I agree with that, but who was the stadium built for? Because if it was built for that 20-year-old girl, lady at that point, then that should be the base fee. Not the six-year-old. A six-year-old should get a discount, not the 20-year-old paying a premium.
I don't think they would design a field for children. They would design it for the adult, I would think.
I mean, I understand the reasoning behind the excess wear, but I'm just, yeah, I'd like to have somebody who is the, you know, the one factor. And then, you know, it's, you know, two times X. Who's the X person that this field was designed for? Because that should be your base.
Bill Burke was built for, I'm going to have to look at Jeff or something, probably 15 and under, 13 and under, based on size of fences. And I don't believe, and you can tell me, I do not believe the turf at Bill Burke probably meets the same standard as the turf at Dean Evans and Pestinger as far as specifications.
My answer, I give you my best shot. It's designed for, whether it be Dean Evans, Pestinger, or Bill Burke, it was designed for the primary activity. And the specifications were created as such for the activity that was most likely to occur. Bill Burke was softball and youth baseball under 12. That's where we're going for it. Those specifications that we put in place when we went to bid were of a nature that would support that type of play. And that was the length of the blade to the thatch, to the amount of infill, to how much the thatch or the blade of grass would show above that. All those specifications. And then the testing for bounce rate and things like that. So conversely, and I don't know the proper answer because I wasn't part of the design process for Dean Evans or the specifications for Pestinger, that was through Salina Baseball Enterprises, but it was designed for premium baseball because they were going for an experience of a premium baseball-type facility. So those specifications are such. I'm not sure if that's the best answer, but that's my recollection.
Commissioner Davis, if you look at number eight, Bill Burke Memorial Park regular practice rate, that's $17 an hour. And that would be the rate charged to a regular team that was practicing, a 10-year-old baseball team playing city league, correct?
Yeah, the example I gave of that is you're coaching a little league team and you want to schedule some extra practices.
Right. So that's 17 an hour. That's why then... That's why, then because of the additional size of the athlete, the adult practice rate at Bill Burke goes to forty dollars an hour to make up for the difference. See eight, compare eight to six.
Six, all right, so same field, different rate for kids versus adults?
Adult, right.
And if I can jump in to respond to your prior question, at the time this agreement was put together, the focus was on raising the money to build it, put this committee together, and they'll figure out the rates later. So the way you phrased your question, there was no predetermined, this is the rate that corresponds with the facility. That was all to be sorted out at a future date.
Okay, one devil's advocate question, are the adults being charged a premium or the kids getting a discount?
Good question, it's not, it's, either way, it's not going to cost recovery.
Oh yeah, I agree, right. Cost recovery is not going to happen.
Seventeen hours, seventeen dollars an hour is what's been set by Parks and Rec. So let's say that's the base rate, so the forty dollars is, I don't want to, it's a premium then for having, for having larger athletes.
I mean, I'm just wanting to make sure, if, if that was the reason or was forty the original rate for everybody and we're going to charge kids less?
Seventeen was the regular rate. We're charging forty, if you look at six, we're forty dollars for a practice, and then because of the, the number of individuals on the roster, there's a twenty-five percent bump to that or ten dollars an hour also. So if, 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 if an adult team is using Bill Burke, it's fifty dollars an hour to practice.
And I, I would offer.
Per field.
That forty dollar rate is a combination of an adult premium and trying to mirror the school district so that we aren't pricing ourselves exceptionally below the school district's rate.
And that was set just on an estimate of what that extra wear and tear might be, or was there any?
The forty dollars number?
Any scientific information that said, you know, adults are going to wear this out twice as fast?
Not to be overly.
I mean, which is what the rate implies.
Not to be overly frank, but it came out of your collective last conversation where you seemed to reach consensus that it was common sense that, that larger.
Adult is going to wear out the turf faster than a sixty-eight pound ten-year-old.
Okay, so, so I mean, I'm just saying that was the reasoning for charging adults more?
Yes.
On a field designed for kids, though?
No.
Bill Burke?
That logic was applied to Bill Burke and it was applied to Dean Evans and Pestinger.
Because if I'm worried about adults wearing out the field, I have a simple solution. Adults don't practice here.
Yeah, it, it certainly doesn't align with our past practice and that spins off other challenges.
Kind of going off here that we know it's going to wear out. And we're trying to facilitate, preparing for that.
We're trying to capture some of the fees for additional wear. That's the way I would state it.
Right, and that's the reason I asked, you know, who the fields were built for. I mean, if Bill Burke was not built for adults to be, you know, trapesing all over it, then, you know, we're contributing to the excess wear by allowing adults on it.
Yeah, so I, I'll speak for staff and I'll tell, give them permission to interrupt me, but I don't think we've approached Bill Burke with an attitude that adult softball is an inappropriate use of that facility. I mean, it, that was in our minds eye all along.
Well, we, we knew high school was going to use it. We knew Sacred Heart would use it. South and Central sometimes have used it, but not very, you know, but we knew Sacred Heart, we knew high schools were going to use it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, it would, to, to echo Mr. Schreik's comments, it was based on the activity, not about the age or the, whether they're a child or adult, or it was about the activity that we were trying to go for at that facility. And that was softball and baseball for kids under twelve. And that goes into the, also the dimensions of the outfield to the, what we selected for a specification for the turf.
We also designed a few of the fields to be more premier fields with premier dugouts, I mean, for game play, I mean, because we knew that the, the schools played there.
As far as practice, do the adults get rotated through the fields or do they always play on the same field? Because that would spread the wear out.
Now, you're talking about Bill Burke, Dean Evans?
Yeah, Bill Burke.
It's, they've done a little of both. They've actually spread, you know, for the adult softball teams that have played there, they've, they've, depends on the team number, members of the team, but sometimes they've rented two fields, sometimes they've rented one.
I think what he's asking is do we intentionally?
Oh, we change it by, so, yeah.
It would make more sense to put them on one exclusive field, let them wear it out.
Change that by season or, or year to spread that wear. Go ahead, Travis.
Yeah, Travis Haley, Recreation Superintendent, we do try to assign, say, Sylenta Central has predominantly used four and five, but do we move them to a different field for a different reason? Sure. Sacred Heart, we predominantly put them on field six. Kansas Wesleyan, field three, and then they use field one sometimes. So we do have a start field, but then they are spread out throughout the seasons for various reasons.
So if, if adult athletes, adult teams are wearing it out that much faster, they're always on field three, we're going to, in theory, we're going to wear out field three faster than all the rest of it?
In theory, yes. Going through this process, which is, is kind of new for us, we've tried to start at one end, end of the complex and maybe shut that down and move to another, especially this fall is what we did. We rotated fields that way just to spread that wear out.
I'm not posing a major roadblock, I just wanted to make sure my logic on this is sound so that when it gets challenged in the future, I know what logic led me to think this was the way to do it.
And I'm repeating myself, but that, to me, that was the appeal of the percentage. You then could apply your logic and say that we think this percentage upcharge is appropriate versus we start talking dollars and cents and it gets hard to figure out the relationships.
And I like, I like the percentage aspect.
Are we okay on Bill Burke, number six?
Well, we got to start somewhere.
I was going to say, can we check? Because the others get a little more.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm okay with six.
And we don't have a scientific basis for changing any of these numbers?
Well, no. And it, it may have been mentioned before, but when was the last time we changed the, the fee schedule on these diamonds? How long has it been?
For Bill, for Bill Burke? We've, it's been several years since we've changed. So when we approached you last year, that was an attempt to change how, the methodology behind how we charge fees, and we accomplished some of those with that process or with that action item. And then we're completing that today. Dean Evans was in 2021, when that committee was formed as part of that agreement, early 2021, those fees were, so we, we had those fees in effect for three years, three and a half years. And then again, when we came to you last year, we adjusted some of these fees with the items that were to be determined that we're discussing right now.
Thank you. Yeah, where I'm going with that is, I mean, it's a number of years where enough has changed in terms of upkeep, supplies, labor, et cetera. I mean, just based on that alone, you, you can make a very good case for it. That's why we're changing the fee structure and we can get into the minutia of, you know, adult, youth, et cetera, but, you know, if somebody really wants to refute that we should be doing this or not, I mean, it's, to me, it's just common sense and cost of operating. And even though it's not going to meet the demand of, of replacement, it's, it's still going, it needs to offset the added expenditures. And, I mean, I think that's at least a starting point for this conversation. I mean, and I guess we should move on from there. It's, so we're good with Bill Burke, so what's, the point of contention is going to be what field then? This, I've kind of got the, are we all good with this, this structure?
I'm okay with it and, and we'll review it again next year. It's an annual, we review rates annually, so I'm okay with it this year.
Sounds reasonable to me.
Saturday, I was in Wichita and attended my grandson's soccer game at the Striker Complex, full-size indoor soccer field. And I had this conversation of athletics and sports is an industry in itself. There's so much money spent. And when I found out that eleven-year-old boy was going to be playing again at nine-thirty at night, that, yeah, they run games from seven to midnight.
Teachers a work ethic.
Everyone pays.
And, and not to sidetrack us too much, but that was part of the, the point of why we needed to upgrade our facilities to get people coming to Sylenta to do that, too. The travel teams and, and spend a lot of money in town.
If there's no more comments, I'll open it to the public to comment.
We, we still got Dean Evans, Pestinger. That was, that was the easy one.
That's why I asked about the point.
Oh yeah, that was the easy one.
The other field. All right, I'm just stuck. We're not ready for public comment yet.
Just call for public comment?
I did and I, I.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I reversed that. We, we had more discussion. Thank you.
The number three, Dean Evans, per practice, sixty dollars an hour plus adult team at twenty-five. I think large roster should also be a plus fifty instead of a plus twenty-five because of the wear. Most colleague, most high school teams have twenty-eight at the most. Large roster teams that hit the forty, fifty, sixty number, that, that's going to be additional wear. If you, and if you just start looking at the bullpens, the number of pitchers you have, they're going to have to throw in a bullpen, number of people taking batting practice, I just think it makes sense for those larger teams to pay a higher fee.
And when we say large, we're talking about the roster.
The roster.
Or if you do, you know, twenty-five percent per so many extra bodies?
You don't know what they have. I mean, you, we, we can't get into every practice.
Well, I mean, if, if they're seventy-five, then there's seventy-five percent. I mean, if, if they're bringing only ten extras, just, I mean, if, if what we're charging them for is extra wear and tear, they'd have, you know, we should have, I would think, some increment. I mean, are you going to charge them the same if they have one person over our limit as opposed to if they bring thirty-five people over the limit?
I think that's kind of really the only way you could do it because that you're going to be counting heads each, each practice and it either meets that threshold or it doesn't.
We're, we're talking about minimum dollars here to use multimillion-dollar facilities. And I, I just, I can't believe we're splitting hairs on a facility. This isn't going to come close to, to being a cost recovery, so I think the numbers we're talking about are fairly minimal.
I kind of like the idea of leaving it where it's at, but discussing with them the proposals that we talked about in the last meeting, where, is that, what the proposals are, is that common or?
Yeah, it's known that they're, they're, have made a proposal and the proposal itself's public. That's potentially an ongoing negotiation and I don't want to speak for Kansas Wesleyan, but.
And part of these rates were set up on, and I, I feel like I'm kind of got my, my hands tied here because we're trying to do Pestinger and Dean Evans kind of together where if you look at the dollars that were, there were dollars invested in Dean Evans. Wesleyan has zero dollars invested in Pestinger. So to me, they should pay, I mean, they're, to practice, based on this, to practice at Pestinger versus Dean Evans, they're going to pay fifteen dollars an hour more. But I've talked.
And just to clarify.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't have put any money into Dean Evans if I could have got this deal like I'm getting at Pestinger.
Well, and just to clarify, whether it's Kansas Wesleyan, the school district.
Or if it's a, and this also, you got to remember if there's a semi-pro league comes in, these apply to the semi-pro league or whatever also. I, and again, we don't have it on here, but I think we need also, and maybe that's not today, but we need to discuss if an out-of-county team comes in and wants to practice or play, that ought to be a higher rate, too. Because I think last year we had, and tell me if I'm not wrong, we had two out-of-state colleges use our field and they, they paid the same rate that a local school paid, correct?
Without the discount, of course.
What's that?
With the base rate, yes.
The base rate?
Yeah, the one clarification I was going to offer is Kansas Wesleyan has a discount applicable to Dean Evans and doesn't have a discount applicable to Pestinger, given that, that their contribution to Dean Evans.
So the out-of-state college was paying the same rate, just that Kansas Wesleyan got a discount on the backend?
They paid the, the base rate where USD three oh five or Kansas Wesleyan then get a percentage off because of their contribution. That's correct.
You know, we, we can make this more complicated, you know, if, if you got something that looks good and, and people will pay it, I'd just say.
I'm, I'm willing to, I'm willing to do the, the number one at the base fee plus twenty-five for adult team. That's for the games, same thing for the number two. But I think number three should be, adult team should be a twenty-five percent increase and large roster should be fifty. And we're not talking a lot of dollars, but I think the, the amount of wear on the facilities justifies that.
Well, we're already tacking on twenty-five percent for being, a college team is considered an adult team?
Yes.
Right, so they're already have a fifty percent surcharge.
Who are you saying that at?
If it's a large number of kids coming out. I mean, you know, at, at some point, I don't want this to be punitive to our local teams, college or, or high school. I mean, it's, it's, we already know we're, we're not going to recoup the cost of.
I don't think it's punitive at all. I think it's still a, a great deal. I mean, it's just kind of trying to collect some of the, the wear and tear we're going to have to replace. And then again, we can do what Commissioner Ivy said, we can look at their proposal for replacement stuff, but that, that's going to take some time. We're, we're kind of up against the gun here because they'll start using the fields here next week or two, soon as the snow melts.
I mean, they're not going to have more than twice the number of a normal team on the field. I, this.
Last year's roster, and I don't know what they have this year, last year Wesleyan had eighty players on their roster. A college or a high school has about twenty-eight.
They have all eighty on the field at one time?
Don't, sometimes.
Which is feasible if you have different stations.
Even if they have forty out there, they're, or forty-five, they're doubling it.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, I, I guess I wouldn't want to poke a knife at them. I mean, they're local, I mean, I'd be content with this.
It was a bit of a quandary because you're trying to balance the taxpayers' interests versus community partnerships and find that middle ground that's fair for everybody and it's.
Yeah, I think the middle ground is we're charging them twenty-five percent surcharge for putting that many people on the field. In particular, always since we can't quantitate what that extra wear and tear is to begin with.
I kind of feel the same way. It's, you know, you're talking it's minimal dollars to them, but it's also minimal dollars to us to. to us to, to kinda burn a relationship with, with our local college that brings a lot of people and a lot of, to term, you know, a lot of them stay here.
That's true.
Well, I think it comes back to my, uh, example of this being an industry, and I agree with Commissioner Hoppick, you pay to play.
Although I don't think Kansas Wesleyan has a large television contract. I don't, I'm guessing they're not raking in millions off their baseball team. And if they had that much, they probably have their own field on campus, but, uh...
See if they got their... Most colleges do have their own fields.
Right, well, the fact that they don't, uh, I would, you know, means either they don't have the space, they don't have the money for a field, and they, we're, we're not gonna get rich off of them using our field.
Yeah, I don't think that's the expectation. I think it's just...
It's not the expectation, yeah. It's just trying to recover some of the costs for the, the, it's trying to recover for some of the wear and tear of larger athletes and more players on the field, is all we're asking. You put a college senior against a high school freshman, there's a considerable difference in the, in their, their strength, the, the, you know, the amount of torque, if you wanna use it when they're batting. It's also, you, you take that number of people, you're gonna have significantly numbered pitchers using the mound, using the, using the, the, uh, the, uh, key, you know, I don't know, the bullpen, you've got, you know, you're just taking more infield, you're just, it's additional wear.
I think Wesleyan already replaced some of those items, though?
Yeah.
They did.
As part of the steel cleat.
We have, well, they did have to replace, 'cause we allowed them to use steel cleats for a while, and then we pulled that away. I guess let's hear from public, and then somebody can make a motion, we'll see where it goes.
I'm good with that.
Mayor and Commissioners Ken Oliver, representing a citizen, Ken Oliver myself, lives in Salina and Kansas Wesleyan University. First off, Kansas Wesleyan wants to, uh, make a point that we are very appreciative of the baseball enterprises in USD three oh five and this city for building the baseball facilities and the softball facilities. We know that this would not have taken place without the initiative of a few folks, so we, we wanna acknowledge that. Kansas Wesleyan has been, um, in Salina for over a hundred and thirty years. The impact that the economics that we've had in Salina has increased by millions of dollars over the last decade. We have increased our enrollment, we've also increased the number of faculty and staff who pay taxes in Salina. The number of games that we host on these fields bring in numerous outside folks who pay taxes when they come through Salina, not only on the gas, on the field, but also in the motels. Kansas Wesleyan has partnered with many organizations in Salina, and we care about the community. Before I continue, I'd like for each of you to reflect on my next comments. What would Kansas Wesleyan look like without the city of Salina? What would Salina look like without Kansas Wesleyan? A few years ago, many years ago, we lost a community in Marymount College. What was the impact that that have in Salina? We also realize that there has to be an increase for fees. We feel that we have been targeted. I wanna go back to a previous meeting where it was singled out, why was Kansas Wesleyan not represented at the meeting? Reason why we were not here, Mr. Hoppick, 'cause we agreed with the fees. We also feel that you were extremely unprofessional towards us. Just like a few minutes ago, you indicated we was talking about adults, then all of a sudden you spun to Kansas Wesleyan. Some of the comments that you made about our large roster size and saying, why do we have those, they don't play, that is a hundred percent incorrect. We have developmental teams. Those developmental teams is also, we developmental, we development, young men and women. Yes, we do have eighty-one players. How many pitchers do we have on our team? We have forty pitchers on our team. They all don't practice at the same time. And the reason why we have those, so we can win conference championships and we can represent the city of Salina in the College World Series. The fees that you have proposed, we visited with Mike and Jacob and a numerous folks, we were okay with that. We know that we had to step up and pay our share, fair share, as you indicated. But coming back now and trying to double it again in the eleventh hour would be an impact on our budget this fiscal year. We respectfully ask you to pause and consider a three-year prorated fee structure so we could budget. In addition to that, you indicated that we are going to pay the same rate as out-of-town teams. So do you appreciate the out-of-town teams as much as you appreciate Kansas Wesleyan? Are those out-of-town teams gonna sit there and put rubber and rake the, the boxes, rake the base pass? They're not gonna do that. Our teams, our baseball team, is out there and they take care of the field. If we tore, if we tear it up, we pay for it. You made a comment that we tore it up with the metal spikes. They made a mistake. We paid for it. We made a proposal because we wanna be a team player, we wanna be a partners. So all we ask is, please, respect us, we can respect you, so we can bring young men and women to the city of Salina and be proud of who we are. Thank you very much.
I think you, you missed, I think you misunderstood me. I said out-of-county would pay, would pay more.
John Blanchard, City, live in Salina. Thank you so much for, uh, taking public comment on this thing. I just wanna take an opportunity to kind of back up what Ken said about the contributions that Kansas Wesleyan makes to this community. Dr. Davis, you've been at many events that I've been, been at, free Christmas concerts, free lectures, football games, basketball games, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, I'm sure knows the value, because just this weekend, they had a big tournament at Kansas Wesleyan, utilizing their very beautiful gym and their campus. And we talk a lot about, we gotta keep our kids at home. Well, that includes kids that are going to Kansas Wesleyan, okay? You have a policy decision to make, and that policy is based on a cost recovery model. That cost recovery model allows you to take in what the value of the overall community is and adjust your cost recovery to reflect what that contribution is. I will tell you this, Kansas Wesleyan, I'm a K-State grad, and I am proud that Kansas Wesleyan contributes more to this community than my alma mater. But everybody wants to talk about how great raw, raw K-State is. Well, I don't see K-State doing a whole lot here. And, and Mr. Hoppick, I agree, you seem to have a personal vendetta against Kansas Wesleyan, and I don't know what that stems from, but I would ask you to turn that around. Because one of the things you left out of your speech about the wonderful things that Mike Scrag has done, and they were all true, is that he helped to form a town-and-gown relationship with Matt Thompson and Kansas Wesleyan, and helped nurture that, and, and do all the things necessary to nurture that relationship. I'll also let you know, because we do get a lot of visitors, and we got a lot of businesses that are saying, we wanna hire Kansas Wesleyan graduates, we're short on labor, are we doing everything we can do to be a good partner with them? And so those are the things that I hope you, I hope you'll consider on that. Also, when Kansas Wesleyan builds housing, or they build, uh, onto their facilities, they have local designers, local contractors. When the city does it, most of the time, it's out-of-town contractors. It's getting sales tax relief. They pay sales tax on all their stuff, they don't ask for a whole lot. I think we should step up to the plate, see them as a very valuable partner. I know this Chamber of Commerce sees them as a valuable partner, I know the Visitors Bureau sees them as a valuable partner, I think that you guys mostly do, I know the staff does. I will just say this, please, stop micromanaging. We have a cost recovery model, let Parks and Rec and the city manager do their jobs. Thank you.
First of all, I have no vendetta against Kansas Wesleyan, I'm just trying to do a little bit of cost recovery, and it's, it, I almost find it amusing that you talk about cost recovery to me, Mr. Blanchard, when we were trying to build a field house, because we were doing it for the benefit of the community, you, all you could talk about was cost recovery, cost recovery, cost recovery. All of a sudden, it's changed. Unbelievable, unbelievable.
Untrue. But go ahead and, and stay, 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 sit up there and state mis-truths, but I got, I got time to come back up. Lose your attitude.
Norman, man, Salina, nothing is free. Put up a time clock for each individual there, and then put a weight scale out there, you know how much he's on his way and how long he's there.
Ben, when I was in Salina, for what it's worth, those of us who don't play but watch these sports, especially at Bill Burke, I have a granddaughter that plays there multiple, like, five tournaments a year. And I realize all of this money doesn't go to the city, that is going to the organization that's putting this on, but it costs me seven dollars a day, times two, times two, for a weekend. So that's twenty-eight dollars, and a grandparent family has to pay to watch their granddaughter play. So, in my opinion, if you're trying to get, um, more fees for the teams coming in, go for it, because us spectators have to pay astronomical amount of money just to watch
I'll bring it back to the commission.
I would...
Well, I think Mr. Oliver's proposal of graduating this so it does not crash their budget is a reasonable ask.
Motion?
I, I would, I would, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve Resolution Number twenty-five dash eighty-two seventy-eight as printed.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Resolution Number twenty-five dash eighty-two seventy-eight. Standby. Okay, yeah, that's correct. Setting the previously to be determined fees for Bill Burke Park, Pestinger Family Stadium, and Dean Evans Stadium. Hold it in favor.
Aye.
All right.
Can we, uh, I mean, what, can we, what do we need to do to get the discussion rolling about the proposal as well?
Sorry, making sure my microphone is on. The second item on the, your options there in, in the staff report were that you could, instruct staff to confer with Kansas Wesleyan regarding any options they wish to propose for your consideration in light of the fee structure that is implemented. So I guess that'd be my suggestion. Now that you've implemented this fee structure, that may impact their, their response, but if you, as a governing body, wanna pursue that, I think you could, um, kinda take that wording in that very last paragraph and turn it into a motion.
I think that's gonna take some considerable analysis. I don't know, with you leaving, if we wanna do that right now?
Yeah, I think the question just is, do you wanna have the conversation? It's not necessarily that you're...
Is that more of a consensus, or we need an actual motion to have the conversation?
Uh, well, I, I think it'd be helpful for staff to know whether that's something you, as a governing body, wanna pursue or not. It, it wouldn't, obviously, it wouldn't be me, well, I'll do what I can in nine days.
I guess the question I have is, how frequently is the field conditions assessed?
Travis Shaly, Recreation Superintendent, I would say they're assessed daily, or, you know, when we maintenance them, if we see something that's out of sort, or, you know, we try to, um, uh, make that right. But they, we, we do proper maintenance, our ATG, uh, comes out at least once a year and looks at the field, uh, and I'm just speaking for Dean Evans Stadium here, but they looked at it, and then they, they were very, very pleased at the condition of Dean Evans Stadium compared to other stadiums that they see. And that, I think that says a lot, uh, and I'll give kudos to our maintenance staff for that, and, and the teams, uh, you know, for the most part, during what they need to do to properly maintenance the field. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, yeah, I just, it, it's easy to, to look at a, a grass field, and like the Chiefs field just last night, you know, it looked pretty rough. And I don't think it's that simple with turf.
Yeah. But, uh, all the information that we receive is, is maintenance is, is key, you know, and when you have, uh, a lot of people, different people utilizing it, and, uh, but maintenance is, is the key, 'cause we all know the, the light, ultraviolet light is, is gonna get it, but maintenance pro, can prolong that as well.
Thank you.
Would be any advantage in waiting a year just to see, I mean, that way Kansas Wesleyan and us knows what their total bill for the year was?
That's not a bad idea.
We may have some idea of how much wear actually the field did take. And but, probably by the time we got around to this, I'm guessing their season would be half over anyway.
Exactly. I agree.
I mean, you just put like a few...
Does that need to be a motion, or just direct to staff?
Just direct staff.
All right.
On the, on, on the to-do list, down the road.
How would you guys feel about a recess?
Uh, I'll take one.
I concur.
How long?
Seven minutes.
Seven minutes, yeah.
Six-thirty-five.
All right, motion there, well, we're gonna recess for seven minutes, we'll come back at, uh, six-thirty-five.
Funding model, we're going to the calendar year annual funding model. And they'll present an annual joint. And the other thing that this incorporates is, I'm kind of referring to it as an economic development summit. But in the prior agreement, there were deliverables that were due at different times of the year. And it was frankly, it was difficult to keep track of those and they just kind of were turned in and acknowledged receipt. This approach rolls together an annual members meeting with on the premise that in the first quarter of each year, they'll provide an annual financial report, they'll provide a strategic plan update and report, they'll provide an annual proposed program of work and a budget. And that's where they'll have the annual funding request. So in one fell swoop, it's an opportunity to recap the prior year, to report out the plans for the coming year, and report out their financial planning and make their budget request of you. And then had some conversation with the chamber as well, that their agreement has some similar provisions. And so it, there might be an opportunity for this to be an economic development summit of sorts amongst the chamber, the EDO, the county, the city, the airport authority, and kind of foster that conversation. And number seven, the annual financial report language, it just spells out what it shall contain, a detailed itemization of all sources and uses of funding, a detailed description of past programming, future programming, and pre and post program metrics. Some of this language will sound familiar from the chamber agreement as well. A line item by line item comparison of the approved annual budget versus annual actual income and expenses, year in financial statements for the prior calendar year. And as we, that's been an ongoing conversation for the EDO itself. They've struggled to, with the cost of a full blown annual audit. And so here recently, we worked with them to allow them to do a financial review. The thinking was that that would save them expense. And I think they got through a year of that and realized it was as expensive, if not more expensive than an audit. The EDO had some ongoing conversations about what they, how they were going to address that. This gives them either option, leaves them to continue to deliberate, but they'll either provide an audit or a review, one of the two, and they'll have to make that determination. And then any additional information that regarding the financial status as deemed relevant by the board. In section nine, the annual proposed budget is implementation of the direction that you gave us previously. They'll prepare and adopt a detailed program of work for delivery and presentation to the members at the annual meeting. And a proposed budget shall include a detailed description of the proposed program of work, those type of things. In section 10.2, the annual member funding agreements for calendar, we're trying to make provision that for calendar year 26 and thereafter, the members agree to consider the annual proposed program of work by October 1 of 2025. And so trying to get their proposal to you in advance, allow you to factor it into your budget presentations, and then you have all the different groups ratify that budget in the fall of the year. There was some discussion amongst the staff of the, of the different members, what if an organization balks? And frankly, that really just kind of becomes a re opener. It calls into question that members, membership in the EDO. We are, the city is the largest funder by far. And I think we'd have to take a look at what that means for the overall budget, whether the EDO could adapt, or whether that kind of causes the agreement to crater. And then 10.4 is the provision about failure to provide support. And it basically would put a member in default and they wouldn't be in compliance with the members agreement anymore. Jumping to section 12.3, that's the election of either a review or an audit, as I discussed earlier. So then jumping to the exhibit. The one of note is. Apologize, I'm having trouble thumbing through these pages. There it is. It is Exhibit C, and it's about three pages from the back of your, of the staff report. That's a table that was created as part of the kind of deliberations and the brainstorming when the EDO was formed and was circulated amongst the members and staff of the members, but it wasn't fully incorporated into the agreement previously. But there was an outside consultant brought in, IEDC, the International Economic Development Council, provided some recommendations, and they created these categories of work going down the left side of the page. And then they divided them out amongst the city, the county, the airport authority, the chamber, and the EDO. And so as part of these conversations, the chamber pointed out that business retention and existing business expansion had been, I guess you'd say allocated to the chamber previously, at least by way of the table that was circulated, when in all reality. I'm sorry? Is that just me? In all reality, the EDO was performing those two functions. So this table has moved check, the check marks for business retention and existing business expansion from the chamber to the EDO. But the EDO readily acknowledged that they have been performing those tasks. So with that, this certainly implements the direction that you provided, makes the other changes that I, that I just described for you, mostly intending to be clarifications, improvements, reflecting actual practice. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. I know Renee's here from the chamber, maybe that's Peter on the line, is it?
Yeah.
And then I think Mitch is also, oh, that's Mitch, okay. And then one other thing that I would tell you is the chamber board took this up on the 22nd and ratified it. The county is scheduled to take it up on February 4th. The airport authority is scheduled to take it up on February 19th. And all indications from staff anyway are, we've vetted all these and we're all collectively recommending them to our respective bodies. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I want to acknowledge Mitch is on the line, Renee's in the room, and I'll stop there.
The budget requests would come in October?
No, the budget requests would come in April.
April.
Then the ratification by all the entities would be in October. In part, the, some of the other entities might want to see what you as a governing body decide about our budget before they finally ratify.
Our budget would have to be ratified and completed before?
August.
August.
Depending on revenue neutral.
So if there's disagreement as to what the members think the funding should be, when does that get discussed?
I'm sorry.
If the members disagree over the budget amount, when does that discussion take place to?
I would expect it's going to, at least from the city and the county perspective, it's going to take place as part of our budget conversation. So it's going to be much earlier in the year. We picked October trying to just have a final drop dead date after everyone had been through their budget cycles, as a final ratification that where did we all land? But I think you'd have every indication well in advance of that of how each organization is working their budget.
Okay. Any other questions or any comments from Mr. Duxler? Go to public comment then.
Mitch, you have any comments on that?
Oh, Mitch. Yep. Sorry, I did it to you again.
Yes, sir. Yes, Mayor. That's all right. I'm not used to be on the little TV screen here, but it works well when you're out of town. Our board is, we've worked through this, discussed this with Mike several times, so are in support of all these changes, feel like it makes a lot of sense for the organization and for the city and the county and our two other sponsors. So we're, we're very supportive and I'll be more happy to answer any questions that any of you all might have.
Any questions?
I think we've discussed it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we'll open the public comment.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, John Blanchard. Just a few questions. I appreciate the kind of clarification with the matrix there on the charts because as I recall then, and maybe you can provide some clarification as to the major roles of the SKEDO and the chamber. Because the SKEDO was to focus on a traction and sort of recruitment for new industry. And, and the chamber was retention and something else, I can't remember exactly what that was. But can you, you told us kind of how the roles, the two things that the chamber was doing that SKEDO took over. Can you let us know kind of what each entity's responsibilities are? Because I mean, and if they haven't changed, because it seems like the city was tasked with housing and some other things like that.
Yeah. So I think that's all, I don't think anything's changed. This table is what we started with, and it represents what everybody was doing. And so you'll see the city's tasked with community development and community placemaking, which we viewed as housing and quality of life. So this is the original matrix, the same categories, the same assignments, with the exception of business retention being assigned to the chamber, but it being undertaken by the EDO all along, and existing business expansion being assigned to the chamber, but being undertaken by the EDO all along.
Okay. And so the leftover things at the chambers, what is the chamber responsible for?
They are tourism and hospitality, I'm sorry, workforce and labor development, tourism and hospitality, small business startups via Project Open, and community perception and image.
Okay. Point number two I wanted to make, and Mitch may, Mitch will have the better insight on this, but just as a general question, when IEDC came here and made their recommendations, they gave all of us a book that said, "Metrix Count." And one of the big thing that IEDC pushed on us was, what you don't count, you don't know. So what are we counting? And so my question is metrics in a general, it may be, are we counting, how do we, how do we count success? By the number of jobs we filled, by the new residents, which would mean population growth, and increase in our tax base and revenues, increase in overall valuation, or something different? What are the metrics that we're measuring that show our success? Because a lot of people have come to me recently and said, John, we're, we're, our population is declining. How can we be doing all these things and our population be declining? And you guys will be pleased to know that I said, you know what, it's, it's not because the city commission isn't trying. And so maybe we can identify some, some of those core areas that we count success.
So two things in that regard. One is the agreement does identify pre and post metrics of each year. And then that's kind of my intended approach with that economic development summit, is you have a, an annual conversation about past performance, past metric, what metrics we're using, how we perform, what metrics we're going to be using going forward. So I think this frames up that conversation, that community conversation, not just the governing body necessarily, because it's the members. It's the county, the airport authority, the chamber, and it's a public dialogue.
Should one of these entities bow out of the agreement, where does that leave the city?
Well, if you go to, I guess it's the second page from the back, that's, that is the breakdown at the moment of contribution. So the city contributes 300,000, the county contributes 35,000, the airport authority contributes 50,000, and the chamber contributes in kind. And so if the other entities bow out, I don't know that that completely hobbles the EDO. I think you end up having a conversation about what does that mean, and how do you as a governing body feel about that? I think it could certainly say, is it time to revisit the model, bring it in house? Do we need to rework contribution levels and membership ability to appoint to the board? But I guess my point is, with the city contributing the predominant amount of funds, I don't think that in and of itself, you know, incapacitates the EDO. I think it forces more conversation.
All right. Public comment, so we ready for a motion?
Mayor Linkwitz, I move that we authorize the mayor to sign an amendment and complete restatement of the Salina Community Economic Development Organization Agreement among the City of Salina, Kansas, Board of County Commissioners of Saline County, Kansas, Salina Airport Authority, and the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce for continuing to maintain and operate an existing economic development organization.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that works. Thank you. Does that pass muster?
As long as you get enough ayes.
You want me to read it? I will happily read it.
No, I got it.
All right. That's five ayes. So on to the next item.
Item. Oops, sorry.
No, that's my fault. Go ahead.
Item 5.8, consider authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce regarding the use of transient guest tax proceeds to promote conventions and tourism.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm going to take even more liberty on this one. You have discussed this at considerable length. I'm confident you have been through the, the details of this agreement multiple times. The one thing that I would, I guess, call your attention to as something of note since maybe your last conversation, is just the addition of equal opportunity language, which is standard language that, that we have to utilize with all agreements. And you can find that in section 18 on page?
Eight.
Eight. Eight or, yes, starts at the bottom of page eight. So it just says the chamber will observe our provisions of our chapter 13, as far as their solicitations, advertisements, those type of things. Other than that, the chamber full board took it up last Wednesday and voted to ratify it. Renee Duxler, chamber president and CEO, provided a copy of the agreement and a PowerPoint, bullet point presentation of kind of the highlights. So the chamber has indicated there, this is agreeable to them, and it represents the prior direction you gave staff when we last took this up.
Any questions or comments? Anyone from the public?
Ben Winholz, Salina, let's bring, bring us up to speed on how much money we're talking here. I think originally it was 400,000 that they were asking for. Is that correct?
This is actually the provision for the agreement, and it spells out that they make a budget submission to the city commission for review and approval, which is separate from this action item. So.
So this isn't about the 400,000 that they want and another employee to do their job?
This is about a funding arrangement for three programs, one being convention of visitors, one being marketing, the other being administration of cultural art grants. But then they submit an annual budget for the city commission's review and approval to fund those activities.
Okay, and I understand that, but, so this isn't about the 400,000 more that they're wanting besides what their budget is now, or what you're wanting going into the budget?
This is about cultural marketing, this is about marketing, and it is, the budget for that is 400,000, but it's not 400,000 more than they've been receiving in the past.
Okay, and this is what you all went into executive session about?
Uh huh.
Okay. So just to comment on this, if the chamber of commerce, and you already said it before, that the chamber of commerce, one of their duties is to promote Salina for jobs, companies coming to this town, good paying jobs. We don't see that. We just got another news bulletin this week that we're losing another company of 100 people. It's not so much that we're losing the 100, because they said that a lot of them are going to stay and be working at home. It's the fact that you're losing the taxes on the business itself that's here, that they're pulling. So if the chamber of commerce, if one of their duties is to bring jobs to this town...
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but it's not. That, what I indicated previously is the roles of the chamber were workforce and labor development.
Workforce and labor development.
That's, that is developing workforce to take jobs, not bringing jobs to town. The EDO is doing recruitment and retention. So the, the roles of the chamber are workforce and labor development, tourism and hospitality.
But don't those two work together?
Well, I, I mean, we're down to 35 seconds. I'd be happy to talk to you outside the meeting, but they are divided up responsibilities, and recruiting jobs to town is the EDO.
Okay, so, so let me go at this a different way. If, if I work for an employer and I'm wanting to get a raise myself, because I say I need it because I need this to do my job, most raises are given off merit. So that being said, I would, I would think most people would feel that have the chamber of commerce prove themselves. And if they're only into the convention and tourism part, then basically prove themselves before you give them all of this money. Because if you're going to give them another 400,000 up and beyond, which I don't know if this is part of it here, but they need to prove themselves, instead of just getting it because they say they need to.
So I generally don't go back and forth with citizen comment, but just a couple clarifications. I think you as a governing body are already aware, this is not 400,000 above and beyond. This is the allocation that the chamber's been receiving annually for years. They're, have proposed using 400,000 of that allocation for marketing. And this is a performance based approach to fund, reviewing their funding levels, and as opposed to the prior model of a mathematical pass through.
Salina, I got a little issue with conventions and tourism. There's a city in western Kansas, they're doing tourism in a cemetery. So are you going to open up the cemeteries here? You went and opened up this burial site on the west side at New Cambria, and that got closed, federal. There's issues around here. You got Indian rock, that's Native American land. If you find a Native American bodies there at Milford, they're going to close that lake and shut it down. I've talked to the Corps of Engineers. So conventions, the three I show on Great Ben, or Dodge City closed, if any of you knew that? That's closed. People are showing up, not showing up. So they closed that one. There's more conventions they're shutting down. So sign an agreement, you're opening yourself up.
Get my money's worth tonight. John Blanchard again. First of all, I want to say this, this is all, all my comments are about the marketing piece. Visit Salina, does an incredibly great job. Renee, in my opinion, does a great job whenever called on to ask, can you come give a presentation to a group? I've heard from numerous people. She shows up and she represents the chamber and the city. So this is about the marketing piece. And you didn't go over most of this, so I might be pulling things out that people at home aren't going to see. Who determines what a lawful use of TGT, the transient guest tax funds are? Is it the governing body determines what a lawful use is? Is there anything in Kansas statute? You guys spent over an hour in executive session the last time, and I don't know how many times before that. Did anybody ask, should we get an attorney general's opinion on if that's a lawful, what the lawful uses are? Second question, does it change, does, does this change at all the charter ordinance? Third question is, and it relates to, the first one is, is there an audit provision in this agreement? If public funds are using, or if you're using public funds, transient guest tax is public funds, will there be open records that go along with that? The fifth thing is that in part of your budgeting process, you say it's going to be performance based instead of the formulaic method that was used before, the 3.7%. What are our metrics on that? What are we going to count? What are our expectations? And I will just bring up that in the past, the reason why we discontinued working with the chamber was because they were required to give annual and quarterly reports, and they failed to do so, which led to us not funding them anymore. So there's a question of accountability. What safeguards do you have in place that those things are going to happen and happen on a timely basis and be taken seriously? And then also, what, what are we doing as far as the public participation? If we're going to brand the city, part of this is, we're going to create a marketing plan and we're going to brand the city. Is this, who has the final determination? The chamber of commerce board? You guys, citizens? What's the public input part of that? And then just a last thing, and I don't mean to throw any thing into this, but to bring something back up from the Kansas West Lane and Ballfields discussion, as far as the reserve funds and spending down reverse, reserve funds, was there any discussion in there about spending down, buying down some of the bonds for the Ballfields with that excess revenue? Or using that excess revenues that, that's in that fund, in the reserve fund, and putting that as a starter for a replacement fund for your TURF? Any, any discussion at all? But anyways, if you can answer one or some of those questions, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll make a first pass, and Greg, you can correct me if I'm wrong. There is an attorney general's opinion that we consulted, which was the basis of determining that you have the authority to determine what are lawful transient guest tax uses, which is what was incorporated into the agreement, is that you exercise that discretion. No need for additional charter ordinance work, there are audit provisions. At the level of detail that this agreement requires financial reporting, you will have them, they will be open records. As far as reserve funds, there's a provision, there is now a provision that they may maintain a 20, a reserve equal to 20% of their annual approved budget. Everything else is returned to the city and deposited in our, in the city's transient guest tax fund. We commit to reporting out the balance and uses of the transient guest tax funds, and you could then ultimately make a determination somewhere out in the future of an eligible use of transient guest tax funds, which we've levied the transient guest tax to fund TURF. So you could, you being a governing body, or whatever governing bodies in place at the time, could elect to use the transient guest tax funds that were swept back to the city for any other lawful purpose, including TURF. Metrics would be for you to administer as you see fit, as you receive the budget requests, as well as the annual reports. And then public participation, I'm hopeful it'd be collaborative, but if you're concerned about that, you could attach strings to funding such that you're satisfied.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Bring it back to the commission?
Yeah, I, I do have a comment, and I'm just curious. You know, this has been a very long process to get here, and appreciate all the work and effort that's been contributed on both sides of the issue. I'm excited to see this digital marketing plan get on its feet. Can Ms. Duxler give us a little summary? And when we can expect to see this launched?
Eric Commission, thank you. Renee Duxler, President and CEO of the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce. What our plan is, is the next step here is to present you a budget, and so you'll get to see that and approve that, and we'll go through the process as the agreement allows. We would hire a person into the position of office of, or Director of Marketing, and that would be our sort of first hire, to get them involved with the community, engaged with everybody that's going to be a part of this process, and really create that strategy and that branding moving forward. And then there are steps as that moves forward to hire talent, graphic design, web development, photography, videography, that will be a part of this sort of internal marketing group that will do the digital marketing. And so, you know, our hope is, is move through this pretty swiftly, but also make sure that we have a strategy set up from the very start, so that we're positioned really well. That may involve bringing in a consultant to help us with the branding, but really having a person in place who's that sort of target, who has the talent in marketing to, to do that strategy making with us. to do that strategy making with us at the very beginning. And I do, since I'm up here, I want to just make sure that everybody understands, as Mr. Scragg mentioned, we are asking for what we have typically asked for. It's a $400,000 for that community marketing program. We're asking for 60%, which is about $240,000 of transient guest tax. The remaining of that is being split between the EDO, Salina Downtown, the county, as well as the Chamber of Commerce to fund the community marketing program. So I do just want to make sure everybody understands that funding model.
That's a really good point. I apologize for missing that.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine. I do just wanted to point that out while I was up here. So I'm happy to stand for any other questions.
So on the branding, you know, Mr. Blanchard brought up, I guess I hadn't thought of it in that wide of a perspective. Who is going to decide what the brand is?
Well, certainly, like I said, we'll start with the core group of partners as a part of this, but I think it's a great point that there will be some focus groups, there will be some sort of those activities that we ask the community, you know, about what their point of view and perspective is. Because some of this community marketing and some of that activity that's not transient guest tax will be that internal marketing strategy of civic engagement, community involvement, really getting the folks inside Salina to become a part of the brand and utilize word of mouth, which is a huge part of marketing, to really talk about how much they love and how much pride they have for their community. So some of that's going to be a part of that, and we certainly need to bring that in on the front end.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready for a motion?
Mayor, I, where are we at? Mayor, I move we authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce regarding the use of transient guest tax proceeds to promote convention and tourism. Second? Second.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. So authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce regarding a program for utilization of transient guest tax proceeds to promote conventions and tourism in Salina, Kansas. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Impose same sign. Onto Development Services, 6.1.
Item 6.1, consider approval of ordinance number 25-11213, rezoning the property located at 655 South Santa Fe Avenue from R3 to PC1.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This evening, we're talking about a property at 655 South Santa Fe Avenue where we have a mismatch between the existing zoning and the intended use. And because of that, we have in our zoning ordinance, a provision for what is called non-conforming uses. And so if you have a use that was legally established, but for some reason the zoning or zoning rules change, you can continue that use forever as long as you don't abandon it, or as long as the building does not get destroyed in a fire or flood, or something of that nature. And so in this case, we have a use that was legally established in 1990 through a conditional use permit approved by the City Commission in October of 1990 to allow what was built as a church to be converted to a medical clinic for the Hodges and Marshall OBGYN clinic. And that use continued, but the building itself has been vacant for over two years, and so that grandfathering has expired. And so that means two things. If somebody wanted to get a loan on the property, a lender's unlikely to make a loan for a building that can't be rebuilt. And then the second aspect of that is, since it's been abandoned for two years, a change to a zoning district that would actually allow a dental clinic is required. So Dr. Robert Moeller, local dentist, had purchased this property, and he would like to reestablish the clinic use. And so he plans to establish a dental clinic in the northern portion of this 7,600 square foot building, and to create a rental space in the southern portion for another medical-related use. And so the only physical change to the building being proposed is the addition of a new covered canopy over the north entrance to the building. So he has filed an application to create a planned commercial district, and that has both a zoning component and a site plan component. And so this application involves both a review of a change in land use and also a site plan for how the property is going to be used. So having a planned commercial zoning and limiting the use of the property to the current footprint of the building does provide some assurances and protections for the neighboring residential properties, as this is a predominantly residential block. The other thing it does is as part of the planned commercial application, you can request variations from established zoning requirements in the C1 district. And in this case, the existing building's setback only four feet from the east property line. So if you were to approve this and approve the requested variation, then should this building be damaged or destroyed in the future, it could be built back in the exact same location if you were to approve this request. And so none of these conditions were created by Dr. Moeller or the previous clinic use. It dates back to 1947, when this building was built as a church. So this was a rezoning application. We had a notification of all the property owners within 200 feet. We got very little public response or input from the notification that we sent out, and the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this at their December, their second meeting in December, and voted unanimously to approve a zoning change to Plan C1. And they also voted to approve Dr. Moeller's plan for using the property, including the building design and the front yard landscaping. And so this comes to you with a recommendation of approval. And if you concurd with the findings and recommendation of the Planning Commission, the attached ordinance rezoning this property to PC1, including the two variations requested by Dr. Moeller, should be approved. If you approve that ordinance, it also incorporates the approval of the site plan into the ordinance. And so I think the primary look that the Planning Commission gave this is that this is an established use that's been used like this for over 30 years. It seems to be historically have gotten along well with the surrounding neighborhood. There was very little response to the notice that we sent out, and so this would allow a long-established use to continue and also to be repaired or rebuilt in the future should it be damaged. So with that, I'd be open to any questions that Commissioners might have.
Any questions for Mr. Andrew? I'll open it to public comment. I'll bring it back to the commission for a motion.
Mayor Lenkowitz, I move that the City Commission concur with the findings and recommendation of the Planning Commission, ordinance number 25-11233, rezoning this property to PC1, including the two requested variations, should be approved.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of ordinance number 25-11213, rezoning the property located at 655 South Santa Fe Avenue from R3 to PC1. All those in favor say, or wait a minute, that's a roll call vote, isn't it?
Yes. Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hopick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ivey?
Aye.
Commissioner Longby?
Aye.
Mayor Lenkowitz?
Aye. Onto the next item.
Item 6.2, consider approval of resolution number 25-8277, expressing support for the nomination of the Dunbar School to the Register of Historic Kansas Places and the National Register of Historic Places.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm going to give a high-level view of this and let you rely on the substantial material that we gave you in support of this, including, I would point out, 18 different letters of support that we received and included in your packet. And so it's unusual for staff to have received letters of support of that depth and breadth as we did on this particular item. But in 2023, CKF Addiction Treatment Incorporated purchased this building and the surrounding property from St. Francis Academy for use in their addiction treatment and recovery program. And Jennifer Echols, who's the Chief Operations Officer for CKF, has been working to produce a national register nomination for the former Dunbar Elementary School on East Elm Street. And so she conducted archival research and interviews concerning the origins and historic use of this building, and put together a nomination form, which you have attached to your report. And this is scheduled for consideration by the State Historic Sites Board of Review this coming Saturday. And they have asked for local input to determine whether there is local support for this nomination to place this property on the National Register. So just a quick overview of history. This building was established as the Paul Lawrence Dunbar Elementary School, and it was established as a segregated school for elementary school-aged black children within the city under the separate but equal laws that were in place at the time. And the school board sold bonds, and they allocated funds to build a school that was on par with all the best elementary schools in the city. And a site was selected over on East Elm Street, and the school was formally dedicated in 1922. And so from 1922 through 1955, it operated at that location, but with the 1954 Supreme Court decision of Brown versus Board of Education, that had the effect of integrating the schools in Kansas and nationwide. And so the enrollment dropped, and the primary purpose of the school was no longer in place. And so the school district decided to close the school, and they ended up selling the school building and property to St. Francis Boys Home in 1959. Previously, the school was designated as a local conservation landmark in 1998, and then in 2000, there was a commemorative marker that was dedicated by the City of Salina and the Dunbar Alumni Association. And that memorial plaza was installed by City Parks and Recreation Department staff, and there was a specific easement granted to the city by St. Francis Academy to allow the Parks and Recreation Department to maintain that plaza as if it were a public park. And so currently, we have 16 properties within the City of Salina that are on the National Register of Historic Places. And the effect of that designation is twofold. One, it makes property owners eligible potentially for historic tax credits for renovation or restoration work they do, but it also subjects the building to some additional review and regulation as far as alterations to the building. And so under the program, there's two criteria that this has been nominated under, and one is that this is a property associated with events that have made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of Salina's history. The other part is that the property should embody distinctive characteristics of a type, period, and method of construction, or represents the work of a master, or possesses high artistic values. And so I think the history and the background of this building, as far as how it relates to the social history and development in the City of Salina, kind of speaks for itself in the report. The only other thing I wanted to call out is the architect, William Schmidt. He had designed four buildings in the City of Salina. He designed the Masonic Temple, which most people would consider to be a notable building. That building's on the National Register of Historic Places. He designed the Lincoln Junior High Building. That building's on the National Register of Historic Places. He designed the Lowell School Building, and that building's on the National Register of Historic Places. This is the only building that he's designed in the city that's not on the National Register of Historic Places. So it's, there's the history component, but then there's also an architectural component. So the Heritage Commission held a special meeting on the 22nd of January. We sent notice out to surrounding property owners and also contacted people through the Dunbar School Alumni Association and the current owner of the property. Included at the Heritage Commission meeting was some Zoom presentations by the president of the Dunbar School Alumni Association, along with 18 letters of support that was received by city staff, which we have included in your packet. And so the Heritage Commission approved a motion six to zero recommending that, to the City Commission, that this school should be made eligible for listing on the Register of Historic Kansas Places and the National Register of Historic Places. And they made four findings, which you can find on page 13 of your staff report. I think to summarize what one of the Heritage Commissioners indicated, that not only was this property qualified under the criteria, it was probably overqualified, and it was probably overdue for this recognition. So your options this evening would be to concur with the recommendation of the Heritage Commission and find that this building meets the applicable criteria for nomination into the National Register of Historic Places, and direct staff to submit a resolution of support to the State Historic Preservation Office recommending that historic listing. Your alternative would be to disagree with the recommendation of the Heritage Commission and find that this school building does not meet the applicable criteria for a nomination to the National Register of Historic Places. So if you do concur with the recommendation of Heritage Commission, there's a resolution, 258277, is attached, and if that is approved and signed by the mayor, we would submit that to the State Historic Preservation Office as an indication of local support for this nomination. I will stand for any questions. I think I noted in the report, I didn't, I won't say I plagiarized, but I certainly couldn't have prepared all that historical background. Myself, I relied heavily on research that John Berger had done for our department. And so credit to him for pulling together all this information.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Any questions?
Not a question, just a compliment on the amount of historical information that's provided. This will go on my bookcase as a book, not a blue sheet. Thank you.
Well, I did share that with, you see a letter of support from USD 305, and we did share that because they were lacking a lot of that in their archives, and they expressed appreciation. They have created a file for this to fill in some of the blanks.
Well done. Yeah, it's kind of amazing to go back that far and find all that information. Somebody had it somewhere. Yeah.
We do have Kara Fisk here from representing the building owner, and there were a couple of people patiently waiting in the hallway that might want to speak on this, so I don't, the people have more to offer on this than I do, so.
And Dean, I was going to ask you, we're on the receiving end of this, who deserves credit for making this happen?
Well, it would be the current, so St. Francis was aware of a lot of this as the owner, but they never took the initiative. But the new owners, CKF Addiction Treatment, took, information was available and took the took, information was available and took the initiative to put this together. So I would say Jennifer Echols and maybe Cara over here was involved with that, but the current owner deserves the credit for this.
Okay, thank you.
With that, we'll open it to public comment. Please and thank you.
I'm Cara Fisk, and I'm the current CEO of CKF Addiction Treatment. And I'm gonna take the liberty of just saying thank you for what you do. This is the first time I've been to one of these, first one I've sat through, and honestly hope not to anytime soon again. So thank you for what you do, because I think it's amazing. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here. And don't want to belabor what CKF Addiction Treatment is, but we've also been in business since nineteen sixty-seven. I just joined their team last June. I'm a longtime Salina resident, but I really admire what they do. It's a great opportunity to bring my thirty-year healthcare executive career to a close, hopefully, in the next five years as I retire. But to do something back home for our community, to serve these patients that I feel like are underserved, which, by the way, we touch more than three thousand citizens per year as patients in substance use disorder. And so to me, that's an amazing number as well in our community. We also employ greater than one hundred employees on any given day, and I think that's worthy to note as well. We serve ninety-four out of the hundred and five counties in the state of Kansas, reaching them by telehealth, and then our extended satellite offices as well. And so it's a great opportunity for us to to create a bold vision for this Dunbar School. And we do have a bold vision for it, not to belabor that this evening as well, but we're going to open up an adolescent walk-in clinic on one of the floors. We're going to move our adult walk-in clinic to the other one of the floors and continue with our Bridge House Treatment, which is currently on the first floor of this school. So we're excited about that as well. And so with that, I'd just like to introduce Dr. Jennifer Gordon. I do want to correct that and answer one of your questions. It's Jessica Echols, not Jennifer. And it's easy to do. But Jessica Echols actually deserves ninety-nine percent of the credit for bringing this to the table today. So she did all of the legwork from the CKF perspective behind the scenes, so.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Dr. Jennifer Gordon. As she said, I am a former Salina resident, born and raised here, as were my mother and my grandmother. My connection to the Dunbar Alumni Association came because my mother was one of the founding organizers of the association. She attended Dunbar School approximately nineteen twenty-six. If you would go out in front of the library, go out their front doors, and look across the street where the fire station is, you wouldn't know that at one time there was an elementary school building that sat on those grounds. My mother was raised about five doors north of that school. It was Longfellow School. And because this wonderful building was built, of course, in the encouragement of all the black, to all the black parents to have their children attend Dunbar, mom and grandma would walk up the street to the corner and then turn and head east to Dunbar, passing Longfellow School, which was her neighborhood school at that time. That being said, my mom so fondly remembered her days at Dunbar School. And one of her dreams as an adult in her actions and activities with the Dunbar Alumni Association was to see that building recognized as a historic site. So we are indebted to CKF and Jessica Echols for putting forth the effort and the support of getting that application in and seeing it done. And so the association, on behalf of the association of which I'm the secretary, we just want to say thank you to CKF and to Jessica, and thank you to you all for considering this resolution. Any questions for me?
Thank you.
It's always good to learn history.
Yes, indeed. We enjoy it also. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ben Winholz, Salina. Thank you for the history on this. And the reason I'm gonna tell you this is because when Saint Francis owned it, I was the plumber that took care of the building. And we remodeled the restrooms on the lower floor. And it was built in nineteen twenty-two and was built great because that concrete was so hard, and the walls were so thick and so hard, we had a heck of a time doing it, but we've got it done. So I was wondering when this building was built. It is one solid building. There is no structural damage to it whatsoever on anything, and it definitely needs to be on the historical register. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public?
I might add my history to that building.
For an ad?
My aunt, my Aunt Donna worked there for Saint Francis for many years. And my cousin and I had the privilege of cleaning that building when we were, this is back in the sixties, seventies. You know, I can't drive by there without thinking of my aunt. And I do want to thank staff for putting this packet together again that preserves this history. And I think recognizing and listing this will further preserve it. It's history we need to remember, and it deserves to be remembered.
If there's no further comment, we're open to a motion.
If I may, I move to approve resolution twenty-five dash eight two seven seven, concurring with the recommendation of the Salina Heritage Commission, finding that the former Dunbar School meets the applicable criteria of eligibility for nomination to the National Register of Historic Places, and direct staff to submit a resolution of support to the State Historic Preservation Office recommending the historic listing.
Second.
Okay, we have got a motion in a second. Approval of resolution number twenty-five dash eight two seven seven, expressing the support for nomination of the Dunbar School to the Register of Historic Kansas Places and National Register of Historical Places. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Long overdue. Next item. Sorry, caught me sleeping.
Item six point three, consider acceptance of the dedicated easement serving the proposed replat of nine south addition and authorize the mayor to sign the plat on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a, if you're familiar with the property on the east side of South Ninth Street, just north of Sam's Club, which people who've been around for a while would refer to Dooley's Pumpkin Patch. But that was purchased, platted, and infrastructure installed, including the marketplace frontage road, but no development activity has taken place. And so the current owner's proposing to reconfigure the plat of this property to a layout that's more conducive to the commercial development they have planned there. And so the first original plat had four rectangular lots of equal size. And now this replat would contain seven different commercial sites. And there would also be a lot set aside for an existing stormwater detention pond that's in the northeast corner of the site. And so there is already dedicated right-of-way and construction of the frontage road. And as part of this request, the only variation to the subdivision regulations being requested is that there's a requirement that all new platted lots have frontage on an approved public or private street. And they have some lots tucked in behind that they're proposing to access from marketplace by the areas designated as Reserve A and Reserve B on the plat. And those will be common area that'll be spelled out in a reciprocal easement agreement that they'll record with the plat. And staff has reviewed that REA, and we believe that the REA has sufficient guarantees in there. The the primary concern of having lots with no frontage is that you could end up with landlocked parcels or parcels that somebody, if they were sold off, couldn't legally get to. And so this this does not create the risk of of having landlocked parcels. And so back in two thousand nineteen, the city commission approved the creation of a benefit district for the nine south addition for water, sanitary sewer, street, and drainage improvements. Those improvements are all in, and those assessments have been levied against the lots in the subdivision. And so this is essentially just a reconfiguration or repackaging of those lots. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the replat at their December seventeenth meeting. And so if you concur with that action, a motion should be made to have the, to accept the offered utility and drainage easement dedications and authorize the mayor to sign the plat on behalf of the city. In the alternative, you could decline to accept the offered dedications and return this plat to the Planning Commission and provide your reasons for not wanting to accept those dedications. But this is a pretty straightforward replat, and since all the infrastructure's already in, this is just rearranging some lot lines to better fit the prospects they have for the property. So with that, I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Any questions? Any public comment? Bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I move we concur with the action of the Planning Commission to accept the accept the dedicated easement serving the proposed replat of South Ninth Edition and authorize the mayor to sign the plat on behalf of the city.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve acceptance of the dedicated easement serving the proposed replat of nine south addition and authorize the mayor to sign the plat on behalf of the city. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that brings us back to item five point three.
Item five point three, conduct a discussion on the next steps in the city manager selection process.
Ms. Fisher, thank you for your patience.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. With this being a city manager search, or at least discussion of the next steps toward what you choose for that process to be, staff is prepared to be support or liaison in any way that you deem appropriate. But I will turn this over to you for your discussion. And if you have questions or any requests of me, I guess just let me know.
Thank you.
I guess somebody has to start. I I did have a conversation with the deputy city manager, the interim city manager now, and told him that my personal view is that we need to do a a search. I think that being a city government, that we do that. And if nothing else, if Jacob is hired as the new city manager, I think that protects him in the fact that we have done a thorough search for a city, a new city manager. I think those are the same exact words that I used when we, City Manager Gage resigned, and then we ended up hiring Mr. Scrag. I just think it it bodes well for everyone that we do a search. And just, we'll see what's out there. And I told, as I told Mr. Wood, that doesn't mean I don't have confidence that he can do the job. I just think it's a it's an exercise that we really need to do to 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 feel comfortable with whoever we hire.
And I concur. I think we need to apply ourselves to find the absolute best person for the City of Salina. And whether that be someone internal or external, we don't, we have no idea. I I've kind of wondered, you know, what kind of applicant pool we would get. And I'm kind of, I guess I'm curious to see who's out there and who can fill those shoes. Because I think we got big shoes to fill. And I guess my question for Ms. Fisher is, if this is what the commission decides to do a search, what's the next step? This is, Commissioner Hoppick and Davis have been through this process before, and it's new to me.
So in terms of what the next step, you would have some options there. Generally, communities our size. I don't see a lot of them doing this internally, engage in an executive search firm. And then they do the recruitment and bring back the candidate pool for your selection and the vetting and whatever other services they might offer. And staff is a support in terms of information, scheduling, obtaining proposals, a wide number of things could happen between that point that you said, staff, we'd like you to get some proposals, bring them back to us, and we'll make those decisions. But again, that would that would be up to you. In terms of what we did in two thousand eighteen, it was a two-tiered approach because there wasn't consensus immediately with the commission at that time as far as what they wanted that search to look like. So the first phase was having a firm submitting proposals. The proposals were reviewed. The commission picked a firm. And then the only thing that happened in that first phase was the development of marketing brochure and profile of what they wanted the City of Salina city manager to be. And then after that, then the other parts of the recruitment and I guess the beginning of the selection started from there. During that time, and I believe staff sent fourteen requests out to, or requests for proposals to different firms, and approximately seven, I could go back and look at my numbers, seven responded. At least one did opt out because their model wasn't just the recruitment piece. They did the full search. And that's why I say you have a lot of options. It's really what the governing body wants in terms of the search and the process and the timeline. And then I can assist in in helping you fulfill those things.
Do you recall off the top of your head how long Mr. Gage had been out of the office before we actually started the formal process?
Let's see here.
You gave us a timeline, I think.
Yeah, and I'm referring to that.
Was there like a six-month gap just to?
I think, wasn't it closer to nine months between the time that
Yeah, he left.
Jason left and you were hired.
It was June to January, end of June to middle of January.
Was it so six?
His last day to my appointment.
Yeah, he left in July of two thousand eighteen, the the end of, and the final interviews happened twelve twenty-one eighteen.
We would have had to have started the process of selecting the recruitment firm fairly early. I remember the brochures, the the public listening sessions, the, we did a lot of work. And then, you know, eventually, we actually got down to real live people to interview. But I couldn't remember if we started that whole process immediately or let some time pass.
Yeah, I looked back at the timeline. The initial request to put this on the agenda was six eighteen eighteen. On the six twenty-five eighteen agenda, it was discussed. You requested staff to provide or to request proposals or statements of qualification. That happened early July. And we had a pretty tight window because you were reviewing those seven twenty-three eighteen. And then shortly after eight six eighteen, the And then shortly after 8/6/18, the firm was selected to come in and help develop the profile and the recruitment brochure. And then, yeah, until the time that you actually had candidate information in hand, it looked like we were at the end of September.
I guess the first question we need to ask is, do we have a majority of commissioners that believe we need to do a search? I guess before we talk about all this.
I'll be honest with you, my initial response was no. I think if we know what we're looking for in a commissioner, we might need to actually sit down amongst ourselves and in very short period of time, maybe duplicate what we, you know, constructed as our ideal candidate profile and see if we have that in-house. And, you know, if we're comfortable with that, you know, there's a lot to be said for continuity and not taking a year to shut down a lot of relationships and activities and programs to get things up and running again. If after we decide what it is we think we need, we feel like, well, let's, let's look to see, we're not sure, let's look out across the board. We may end up at the same person, same place. I don't see us in as a potential area of flux now as we were, seemed like it was a lot longer than six years ago. And it's not a, as Rod used to say, it's not a sword I would die on. I'm comfortable either way, but I'm comfortable without a search.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my answer to you as far as the continuity would be, we're fortunate, we do have an interim city manager, and we also have Mr. Hennessy here, so I think we have staff that's, that's well-versed in what's going on, and I really don't see us having to take a step back at this point. Also, we obviously have legal counsel here to guide us too, so I feel comfortable that we're not going to take six months to not do anything. I really feel like we'll continue to, to march forward as, if we go through this process.
Yeah, I, I would certainly not be a hindrance to a search process. I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with it either way, but, you know, my initial gut feeling was, I'm comfortable with that one.
I can't speak for the other commissioners, but I know that I lost sleep over this issue. My, my initial reaction is obviously, Mr. Wood is highly qualified and I think would do well in any application process, not just here. I think the, for me, the conundrum is, I guess looking at it from the lens of public perception, and, you know, obviously we're doing this in public and we're transparent about it, I think there's still an element of public perception of, hey, you just kind of, you guys took the easy way. And even though I think at the end of the process, we'll probably end up with Mr. Wood, it's highly likely we will, to be honest, I think he's highly qualified without exception, but maybe running through the process is just going to show good faith to the public that, hey, we're, we're looking at all the options. And even in my case, maybe it's a little grudgingly. Because I, again, he's highly qualified.
Well, I mean, the advantage to him is he knows, he goes through a search process, even if it's a search of only two people, he knows exactly what we're looking for. I mean, there's no, has to be this way or that way, but there are advantages to him in sitting across from us and answering questions. I think whatever we do, it should be something that we're all comfortable with, and it's kind of like the UN Security Council, you know, one veto shuts it down. And if even two of us want to go through a search, I think that's enough reason to go through a search.
Yeah, I feel kind of obligated to the public to do a search as well, and I know Mr. Wood would have, you know, I feel like maybe an advantage because we're, we're going to see him every day between now and when he's hired, that could work for him or possibly work against him, so.
Right.
He'll have a better interview process than everyone else, but I do feel like we owe it to the public to see what's out there as a whole.
And, you know, and we can make it as extensive and fancy as we want. There may be a lot of groundwork that we did the last time that probably has not gotten old in six years. At least use it as a framework for.
So I guess, I guess what I hear is there's sentiment, maybe not all strong sentiment to, to do a search, so I guess with that being said, our next step would be to look at Mrs. Fisher and say, to go out and, and get proposals from executive search firms for us. And I did, I made some comment, or some notes, maybe some of this is from the prior time is, you know, when you do that, you know, obviously we want references, which I'm guessing they give you when they propose. Also their, their fee structure, because like you said, I think last time, some of them will do part of the search and not, you know, there's different steps to it. Am I correct that, that we get an idea of how they handle the search? And do they pre-interview? There's, those are, I guess, questions we'll get once we get information back from them.
Do we have the search firm do the public listening session?
I, this, I was going to go to something here. My other deal was, is when you get proposals from the search firms, can you, and I don't know if we did this last time, ask if they actually represent other potential city managers? Because I believe if I'm correct, some of them actually will represent an individual looking for a job. And so if they do, I think we want to make sure they disclose to us if they give us a candidate that they're also representing. So I think that's, we need to know if they represent other potential city managers, and if so, we need to make sure that they are forthcoming if they are representing somebody that they send to us. Then I think that, the, the good thing about this is, you know, this gives us a chance to look at ourselves, and, and I can't remember how we did the community input and at what peer, at what time we did that last time, Commissioner Davis, but I think this is a good chance for us to ask the public for our strengths and our weaknesses, because we may have blinders on to some things, or we may think we know things we don't know, and I think some of the, asking the right questions can give us some good questions to actually ask the potential candidates.
Right, and you still have all the document, I'm sure I have in my basement somewhere, but you, you still have all those documents.
Yes.
I'm assuming. And we may not have to build the wheel from the ground up, but.
So I, I think the sentiment here is to, to do a wise search. So you will put out, do we need to make a motion to do?
That would be my question too.
I think at this stage, Mayor and Commissioners, you're at the point where, as long as you're either operating from motions or by consensus, so that Ms. Fisher has clear direction, whatever it, whatever you're most comfortable with works.
I think we have a consensus.
I concur. And we get the proposals back, they will be brought before us to sort out and make a decision.
I don't remember looking at 17, did I?
I believe I sent that many requests and you received seven?
Did we look at all seven, or did you help us? I can't remember.
I think the list was filtered, at least I hope it was.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, and I, I can find that information because I do, I do remember needing a dolly, a small one, to get the boxes to my vehicle to deliver to the commissioners. So you, you initially had a lot of information to review, and that would be my, my question for you.
Memory's coming back.
Is how broadly do you want me to search and request proposals? To give you an idea, I looked at the ICMA, which is the International City Managers Association website, and they listed 57 search firms that currently help with that. If I narrow it down to the ones that we see more volume in Kansas and the Midwest, and firms that, or have an affiliation within Kansas or very close by, there's probably five.
I would think you'd want to search firm, firm that deals in the Midwest, whether that's Nebraska, Missouri, Kansas, Oklahoma, Colorado, that area, because I think, and this, I'm just talking out loud, but I think if you have an individual that's used to the Midwest, they understand the Midwest, and they're more likely to stay in the Midwest. I think if you tried to bring somebody in from Florida, they're going to struggle with our snow removal process. But that's just kind of a joke, but, you know, I think, I think you're going to get somebody that's more apt to, to be comfortable here, so, I mean, you, you'll kind of have an idea when you look at those, if they deal more in the, you know, five, 10, you know, state range or something, you know.
So in terms of distributing the requests, you would be comfortable five to six firms that are doing active searches or familiar with our region?
I would think, because we're going to drive ourselves crazy just selecting the firm that selects the candidates. I mean, we're still several steps away from the live bodies. And I don't know about, you guys may use talent search places more often than me, but, you know, I'm not even sure how I'm going to select one over the other. I mean, other than, you know, the geographical area they work in. I remember the last, some wanted to do full scope, some were just interested in helping us craft the position, some would take you from the beginning all the way through the end, and the fees varied depending on how much, how far into the process they, they went. I don't know what our budget is for this, but, or what would be a reasonable amount of money to expect to spend.
I don't even know what to expect.
That was my next question, was what's it going to cost?
I guess we'll find out when we get proposals.
And, and as far as numbers, I, I think we see a minimum of five and a max of 10.
Yeah.
Mayor, may I ask Ms. Fisher a question?
Absolutely.
That I hope is of interest. Do you see, based on our prior experience, that benefit from scoping the engagement prior to requesting proposals?
I do see benefit, not only in maybe assisting the companies in responding, but also aligning with maybe what the commission has in mind on next steps.
That would probably save, I mean, if we can say we're looking for a person with these qualifications who can do this and is familiar with this geography, you know, some of the companies may say, well, we don't, that's not our geographical area, or we just have to catch a wide, throw a wide net and, and see what we get.
Well, Commissioner, if I may, my point was more to what the expectation is of the consultant. Do you expect to have the consultant assist in the development of a profile? That's one, I think, relatively identifiable step. You go from the profile to, and not to take everybody all the way through it, but I think you get the idea that you will be presented with, based on our experience, am I correct, various scopes of proposed service, various procedures. And my concern is that you find yourselves comparing apples with oranges if you know now the steps you anticipate. Now, there's a chicken and egg aspect there, I realize, of whether you want to see what they're proposing.
I guess that's why I kind of asked for them to give us a, a breakdown of what they do and their fees, because I'm going to be honest, right now, I don't know what I want them to do for me 100%.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know if what they're, they, a lot of them will, will give, some of them may say I do it all or I do none. Some of them may say we'll do step one, two, and four, you know, I don't know. So I guess that's kind of where I'm at.
Well, if that works for you all, that, that's fine, it's just wanted to make sure that.
I think, I think once we see what all the steps are, we may say, oh, we, we don't need that, or I hadn't even thought of that step, we better have, you know, so.
So one of the firms does have on, that, that is doing quite a few of the city manager, city administrator searches in our area, has on their website three different types of approaches. They have a full search where they take it from beginning to end. They have limited services, which is an à la carte type menu, or a very limited support where you just turn to them for a little bit of support, but they're not guiding the entire search. And if it, were you thinking specifying all three of those to see how they all respond, or to not get that specific in terms of asking for scope of services?
Oh, I was only raising the question to be sure that Commissioners were thinking in a way that would help you have the direction I think you need as you pursue these candidate, candidate consultants, I mean.
Yep.
So what if we just put out the help on its line? Mr. Kr, Mr. Skrag has experience with this.
Yeah.
Put out the help on the sign, I guarantee you're going to get one applicant. I would tell you from kind of city manager perspective, there are firms, sorry.
I would tell you kind of from the city manager perspective, there are firms that are active in this area. I think Ms. Fisher's right, you know, five, 10's probably the high end. I don't know that, some of them aren't so geographical, they may be based out of Texas, but do a lot of work in Kansas, Nebraska, but it's pretty easy to narrow the field to the ones that as a city manager, you get solicitations from that you know are active and, and have a process. But then it definitely is a function of which services of theirs you want. But I think, again, I think Ms. Fisher's on to something between the website and maybe going through your prior submissions that you received, you could probably kind of get a first pass at what those services are, you could maybe have a conversation about what seems important to you or what's of interest to you. And then I have not, I've not been on the side of negotiating with a selection firm to hire a city manager. I don't know how flexible they are in terms of à la carte pricing, that's, I think, where it might get a little difficult.
Concern I have is, I mean, I think it's really easy to kind of group the region, like it's, you know, it's the Central Plains, or it's the Midwest, and I think Salina's a very specific location with specific needs, and I think it's going to be hard to dial in. I think the, the wants or requests, because I mean, if you, and again, that's obviously not my area of expertise, but to me, it seems like if you apply the same methodology, like let's say hypothetically, you have somebody who works in Olathe, and it's, you know, suburb of obviously Kansas City, and if, I think if somebody from a place like that, if they apply the way they do things to Salina where it's just kind of by itself geographically, I don't know if those things will translate to a successful product or, or result. And the more, more we're having this conversation, the more I'm getting bogged down with, I guess the nuances and, and potential intricacies of, of the process, and I don't know, I keep coming back to how qualified Mr. Wood is. Obviously, I'm conflicted.
I think we need to sit down and, and, you know, discuss, you know, what it is that we're looking for. I mean, you know, we've just done a yearly evaluation on the city manager, so we, we have a pretty good idea of what our ideal candidate should look like, because we're comparing. comparing, or compared our current city manager with that ideal. And, you know, we can ask ourselves, you know, quickly, you know, do we have it here? Are we going to ask the candidate, you know, argue this? Or pretend what those answers would be. But at least, you know, we should have a pretty good idea if what we need now is drastically different from what we needed six years ago. If it's not, I think we can save a lot of work and time. If we think our position as a city is different, and we need a different skill set in three or four areas in particular, then we can at least have the recruiter start, you know, selecting.
See, I think, I think that's something we can do. I mean, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves. I think we need to talk about, you know, we're talking about what we want in the candidate. I don't think we're at that point. I mean, I think right now, we need to talk about trying to get, if we're going to get a search firm, what that search firm, firm looks like, and what we want them to do for us.
Yeah, I would just, what their services are and what their price is. I don't think we're going to be qualified to separate them. And we may have to separate 20 of them, but, you know, they will tell us what they do. Because they may tell us things we don't know to ask about.
That's a valid point. How quickly do we want to get this underway?
I mean, I think we...
Right now?
Yeah, I mean, I think we start sending out, asking for proposals as soon as possible from search firms.
What deadline would you like me to select for their responses, and then in anticipation of providing the information to you?
You know, I'm guessing you've done this with other, even positions we have, you, you have to tell us what you think's appropriate. 45 days, 30, 60?
Yeah, where, where I hesitate is, we're just asking for their services.
Proposal, it shouldn't take very long.
Right, so, I could ask them to redistribute it immediately tomorrow, and ask them to have the information back to us no later than Friday, February 14th.
That'd be good.
Okay.
Sounds good. If you can do that, yeah.
I don't have the commission's schedule in front of me. I don't recall if you meet that following Monday. If not, I could still get the information packaged into you.
Our meetings are February 10th and February 24th.
Okay. So, that, that would be in between the meetings, but you would still have information to review.
Do you want to take public comment?
If we're done discussing any, Al, we can do that.
I had one more question, maybe Mr. Binkston can answer this. Will this all be conducted in open session or closed?
It will be conducted in open session.
Good.
Anything that we are dealing with that has to do with your, your process is certainly open. When you get to a point where you are interviewing a specific candidate, then that's when that candidate's privacy interest attaches, and that is the basis for the executive session context for an interview.
Okay. Any more comments? We'll open it to public comment.
Northern Mountain Salina, I think it should be open. What I'm hearing, somebody is kind of like insider trading. You know what they do to them people in the stock market? Because somebody's got an inside track. You should go outside of the area, you might find a candidate that's well qualified, but to discriminate that, that person has to be in this area. You might be able to find somebody on the East Coast or the West Coast. Oh, that would change things up around here, wouldn't it? Which it needs to be done. So, I know a man got caught for insider trading in a big firm from Texas.
Just referring to Mr. Mountain, I'm assuming, like in most industries, there are journals, lift ser, I mean, it's, I don't want to use the word insider, but anybody from Rhode Island to New Mexico who's looking for a job is probably using the same...
Correct. I took your comment about geographical experience being recruiting city managers in our area. Most, if not all of those consultants are going to broadcast that nationwide, and by way of ICMA and other publications and their own marketing. And then, to Mayor Lankowitz's point, as you're looking at the candidates, then you're going to dial into, you know, their work experience, how applicable is it to the challenges we're trying to face in Salina?
All good comments. John Blanchard. No recommendation on, obviously, I think, it sounds like you're going into the finding a consultant to do it with. I think that's a smart way to go. I agree with the comments that, that helps to safeguard not only the public trust, but it also, if you do end up choosing the interim city manager, it's, and I said it when Mike was running. I said, you want, you don't, you don't want to put that on Mike at the time, you want him to compete against everyone else. And so, the same thing could be said now with Mr. Wood. One thing I would caution you against, and I, I don't know that you've got the cart before the horse or whatever, but many communities that are larger like ours, where they want to preserve that feeling of competition, that everyone that applies has an equal chance, is that, I know the city of Wichita is this way and some other places, is that if you are planning to apply for the permanent position, then you are not eligible to be the interim, because it eliminates the concerns, I think, that some of you had about having that inside track. The other thing that I would just caution you against is, when you do have a, a selection firm, one of the things they'll probably tell you that you've done a little bit of, and maybe you can walk it back, is the more you talk about how you're leaning already without a process towards hiring Mr. Wood, you are going to limit your pool of qualified candidates, because they're going to think, well, jeez, they've already got their mind made up. So, I would just caution you to not discuss publicly about how, well, you know, I don't know if I want to go through this process, because I just want to give the job to Jacob right now. I think you need to be really careful about that, because there may be really great candidates out there that would fit perfectly here, and they might be from Oregon, they might be from Rhode Island. So, I just would keep an open mind, but I appreciate that you're going the RFP route. So, good luck.
So, no action? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. That's a good comment, Mr. Blanchard. I, I agree with you, you know, the devil's advocate says, well, gosh, you have a deputy of anything, or you have a vice of anything, because you think that person can step in if the person in the top spot is no longer there. Now, usually it's temporary, but you don't put trust in a deputy if you don't think they are reasonably capable of fulfilling the role. But your comment is well, well taken. Just shows you how unclear the path is in the decision-making process. Somebody wants to go.
You have enough, you have enough direction from us? Okay.
All right. That leaves us to other business. The commissioners have other business.
How about those chiefs? Hey. We turn the overhead city lights red and white.
Yep.
Oh, I don't know much, other than the lights are going off and on in our office suite this morning as they were working on it.
Change them and I'll change them. Thought about it last night.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're talking...
The light did go on there, it did.
No, I was tracking on a whole different light project.
I thought, I thought red and white, but the chiefs would roll right into Valentine's Day, so...
I think, do we have a consensus on that?
Yep.
That would be a yes, sir. Thank you.
You don't have to, you can wait till morning.
Well, you know, wait, you know...
You turn them green, somebody's going to...
Let me go back on that. Because the superstitious part of me would not change anything major until they've won the game they're going for.
That's right, we didn't do it for the last two Super Bowls.
We didn't, you know, I would just keep those lights where they are, but have the programmer ready.
And I agree with it, actually.
So, when the clock says zero, zero, just takes one, and it's done.
See, now it's out there, and that's...
Right.
I'm inclined to agree with you.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm superstitious enough, I just, you know...
Change them and they lose the Super Bowl.
Right.
We're going to get one.
All right. All right. Socks he had on the last Super Bowl, so...
I like it.
We don't have a big outdoor screen we could put down at City Light stage and show that game doing.
There might be some NFL licensing issues before it's all said and done.
Okay, I'll let you go ahead.
So, that will lead us to Citizens Forum. Please limit your comments to three minutes, please, and thank you.
Ben Munholz Salina, you're right, Mr. Davis, we don't want, or Commissioner Davis, we don't want to whammy them, and there's a certain shirt, a chief shirt, that I will not wear, because they lost the Super Bowl when I wore that shirt. I don't wear that one anymore. This is a rebuttal for something that I said earlier today that involved the River Renewal Project. The one I wanted to phase is not here anymore. But after I gave my comments and numbers, she got up and said that those numbers were incorrect. So, I would like to verify, since I've been putting these numbers out there every time I speak to somebody, if I'm right or wrong. Now, I'm going to take out the $100 million that I personally think that it will cost before this is all over with, but from what I can recollect, we are $5 million into this without a set of blueprints. That number is correct?
The number may be correct, but there are a set of blueprints. And to say that we're in debt, we, the voters passed a sales tax increase that is, we then incurred debt to fund the project to pay with the authorized sales tax.
Right, and I was wrong when I said we're in debt for $5 million, but we have spent $5 million. We're into this for $5 million so far. We are going to get $12 million from the Corps of Engineers for a grant for nothing but dredging the river. Am I correct?
We got a raise grant for $22.3 million for seven bridges.
Yes, that's the, from KDOT.
We got $400,000 of funding for Corps of Engineers planning to then pursue additional Corps of Engineers funding based on that plan.
And you do not have that funding yet?
Other than the planning funding, no.
Okay.
But we, we started out with a phase that corresponded with the sales tax that was approved. We expanded the phase with the raise grant, and we're pursuing expanding the scope with the Corps funds.
Okay, so you don't have the $17 million yet? And I'm, I, I know that...
No, no, wait. The $17 million is the city number, and we have the sales tax authorization for the $17 million.
Okay, and there, there was the numbers thrown out there that they, the city thought this could get done, and I don't know what that number is today. I had heard anywhere from 27 to 34. Is that correct? That this whole project, from start to finish, that's what it will cost?
Depending on the scope, there is a 20, there was a $27 million scope.
Okay, all right. That being said, so I am mostly correct then, except for my $100 million. And I'll, and you all got to take this into consideration when it comes to sticker shock like this. If you've got 1.5 million for a small project in a park, and you're going to do seven miles of river with all the things that are supposed to happen from all of the parks to everything else that was listed, and I know some of it was taken out, because the original number was 95 million on the first study that you did, and it was downsized, that you're not, I'm not going to be too far out of line, I would think, but prove me wrong. But, like I said, you're going to do a lot of wheeling and dealing with, with contractors and everything else to try to get what you think you're going to get for 27 million, considering you got 1.5 million right ahead, right here, that you turned down for, for a small project. So, thank you.
Northern Mountain against Salina, why would I be in law enforcement when our government is pardoning the people that committed this crime against law enforcement? They're pardoning them, aren't they, in Washington and Topeka? Have you said anything to your elected officials in Topeka and Washington about what they're doing? Law enforcement gets the hell beat out of them, and they pardon the guy that committed this crime. So, you need to be talking to your elected officials. Another one, I got another comment. Don't even compare the city, the city manager to Mount Rushmore, them presidents. That is a sacred land to Native Americans. That is offensive to them.
Mayor Commissioners, the reason I came here today was this. Appreciate the vote you took on Dunbar School. I wrote and I'd like to read a proclamation honoring and celebrating the life and legacy of Dana Hudgens Crawford. Whereas Dana Hudgens Crawford, a native of Salina, Kansas, and an extraordinary historic preservationist and developer, whose vision forever transformed Denver and the state of Colorado, passed away on January 23rd, 2025, at the age of 93. Whereas Dana Crawford dedicated her life to preserving the architectural and cultural heritage of Colorado communities, most notably in Denver, and most recently in Trinidad and Idaho Springs, where her efforts revitalized historic landmarks and ensured the stories of the past would endure for future generations. And whereas in 1965, Dana led the pioneering restoration of Larimer Square, saving it from destruction and transforming it into Denver's first historic district and a vibrant center of commerce, culture, and community, a project that became a national model for urban revitalization. And whereas Dana Crawford's vision extended to many other transformative projects, including the restoration of Denver's Oxford Hotel, the Union Station, Trinidad's historic Fox Theater, and the Mighty Argo Mine in Idaho Springs, blending historic character with modern vitality. And whereas her work earned her numerous local, state, and national recognitions, including her induction into the Colorado Women's Hall of Fame in 1996, and receiving the 1995 Louise Dupont Crown and Shield Award, the highest recognition from the National Trust for Historic Preservation, cementing her legacy as a trailblazer in the development, revitalization, and preservation movement. And whereas Dana Crawford's influence and passion for preserving the past have inspired countless individuals and organizations, including Salina Downtown and the Friends of the River, fostering a renewed appreciation for history's role in shaping the future. And whereas her passing is a profound loss to Denver, Trinidad, Idaho Springs, Salina, and the nation, but her legacy will live on through the historic places she saved and the vibrant communities she nurtured. Now, therefore be resolved, the people of Salina, Kansas, recognize and celebrate the life, vision, and achievements of Dana Crawford. We extend our deepest gratitude for her contributions and pledge to honor her memory by continuing the work she so passionately championed. January 27th, 2025. And I thank you, because I think you've already begun that with your vote today on... And I thank you, because I think you've already begun that with your vote today on Dunbar School. So I appreciate that. I would also like to give this to the clerk and have it entered onto the minutes, if that is okay. Okay. And just, if anybody has time to Google Dana Crawford, she's a legend, she's a national treasure, and she's one of our own. She was born here, 1931. I think her father was the manager of the marina out at Canoplis. She went to Radcliffe, she went to the University of Kansas, graduated there. She was a pioneer and a trailblazer as a woman and a man's profession. And she was a friend, and she's gonna be missed. She was, she was really an amazing person. Thank you.
Motion for adjournment. Those in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned.